Thank you for joining us at this special meeting of the Madera City Council. Today is Thursday, June 18th. The time is shortly after 6:00 P.M. And this meeting will be conducted pursuant to the provisions of the Governor's Executive Order, which suspends certain requirements of the Ralph and Brown Act. The City Council meeting will be livestreamed on the city's website, and members of the public may participate in the meeting remotely through electronic meeting in the following ways.
You're cutting out, Mr. Mayor.
All right, is that me? I do hear background noise, so I will ask if you're not participating, if you would please mute until called upon, I would appreciate it. Once again, this meeting will be provided remotely through a electronic meeting in the following way via phone by dialing (669) 900-6833, and enter ID number (973) 1591-9003, and if you'd wish to speak, hit *9. With that, I'll ask our city clerk to call roll, please.
Mayor Medellin. Mayor Protem Garcia. Councilmember Gallegos.
Here.
Councilmember Rodriguez.
Here.
Councilmember Montes.
Here.
Councilmember Robinson.
Present.
Councilmember Holly.
Present.
Fantastic, thank you so much, Alicia. We will first start with our invocation. If you are able to stand, stand with me, please, and welcome Pastor Mark Unger from First Baptist Church of Madera. Pastor Mark.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, good evening, councilmen and women, and God bless each one of you. Lord, you are the mighty one. You are the God of Jacob, Abraham, Isaac, and Jacob. You are God the Lord, and you have spoken. May you come this evening upon this city council and those attending the meeting and not keep your silence. Lord, we pray that the heavens would be declaring your righteousness, for you yourself are the judge of the motives of our hearts. We pray that we would hear, Lord, as you would speak this evening. As we consider the possibility of dealing with various funding for different items tonight, we recognize, we acknowledge that every beast of the forest is yours, the cattle on a thousand hills, you know every bird of the mountains and everything that moves in the field, you own it all. And now we come and we call upon you in this day, and we ask that you give our city council, our mayor and the others present in the meeting, your wisdom, that you would strengthen each one to make the right decisions as concerns the handling and allocation of these funds. We pray for councilmember Holly's wife, that you would continue to heal her foot and other complications from the recent surgery, and that you would help he and she and the doctors with great wisdom as to what the next steps need to be toward full healing. And so we ask, Lord, again, for your wisdom, and we say blessed is the nation whose God is the Lord, blessed is the city of Madera, as we would hope and pray that we would be a people of God, and your will be done in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. Thank you so much, Pastor Mark. And now, if you'll remain standing, please, and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. Ready salute. I pledge allegiance to the flag.
...of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everybody. Moving into the approval of the agenda, I'll ask my colleagues if there's any changes to this evening's agenda. If seen none, I will call for action on approval of the agenda.
Move to approve the agenda as presented, Mayor.
Okay.
It's been moved by Councilman Rodriguez and seconded by Councilman Montes to approve the agenda as presented. All who is in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries unanimously, thank you very much for that. But the comment, members of the public shall have the opportunity to address the council on matters regarding to tonight's agenda only. I'll ask our city clerk if we have any written or call-in public comments this evening.
None received at this time, Mayor.
Thank you. I do show an attendee with the last four numbers, 7027, wishes to speak. I will call upon you now. You are with us.
Yes, this is Steve Copeland calling, and I just wanted to thank the council for all your efforts and work that's been going on during these tumultuous times, to say the least, so, so, thank you. And also, I hope the council continues to support the police department, and, and, well, you don't have any authority over the county, but, but, these are crazy times, guys, and I just want to say thank you, that's all.
Appreciate those words of support, Mr. Copeland. Thank you very much for being with us. I see no other attendees, there's no other written communication, so seeing none, hearing none, we'll move into our first agenda item. This is item number A1, the Public Hearing on the 2020-2021 Consolidated Plan and Analysis of Impediments to Fair Housing Choice and the 2020-2021 Annual Action Plan. I believe Ms. Yarreta will be leading this.
Yes. Good morning, Mr. Mayor, councilmembers, members of the public. My name's Yvette Yarreta, I'm the city's grant administrator. I will make a very quick and brief Spanish language announcement, as is required and encouraged by HUD. Buenas noches, mi nombre es Yvette Yarreta, soy la administradora de la Ciudad de Madera. Esta es una audiencia sobre los fondos de CDBG. Si alguien necesita traducción del inglés al español, por favor dejarnos saber en este momento. Okay, I just offered translation, and I don't see that there's a need for translation during this evening's public hearing. I will proceed then to open up the public hearing item this evening. I want to start by saying that this work started at the beginning of this year, so we're very proud to be here, ready to present this item to the council and to the community. We are going to start with a presentation on the consolidated plan. I will be turning it over to Crescendo Consultant, that will present what it is that we're doing with the consolidated plan, and then lead us into the action plan. And then after that, I will also bring the Chair of the Block Grant Commission and our program manager, Dave, to continue with the public hearing. I just want to say that this is a very unique opportunity for the city. Every five years, we have the opportunity to develop a consolidated plan and, and do a lot of work to support the needs of the community based on what is identified as priority needs under the consolidated plan. I also want to say that I am very proud to work with the Block Grant Commission. They have done extensive work in preparation for tonight's hearing. They have been reviewing dozens of applications, and, and you will see that they have completely vetted these applications by scoring them through a rigorous rubric process. They have also utilized past performance of applicants and assessed past performance, as well as evaluated the previous consolidated plan to ensure that the applicants are presenting projects that are in conformance with the consolidated plan. So, very proud to work with this group, and, and they've done a lot of work to offer the recommendations that they will be offering tonight. At this point, I'd like to introduce you to Scott Good from Crescendo Consulting, that will start us off with an explanation of this year's development of the consolidated plan.
Yvette, thank you very much, and hello, hello, everybody. It's so, so nice to see you. It's, you know, it's unfortunate, in a way, that we have, have to meet virtually like this. I'd love nothing more than to be there in person, but this is a good, a good second choice, so it's, it's good to see you. I really appreciate, appreciate the time to be with you this evening. My colleague Jeremy Van Drouf is here with me, and what we'd like to do is share a few slides and give a little bit of background on the consolidated plan. I, I think you can probably see, see my screen here. And once again, this will be a little bit of, of an overview. We'd like to spend a few minutes and talk to you about the objectives of the consolidated plan and the action plan. Talk about what we did. It's a, it was a wonderful process, even with the restrictions on, on group meetings and things like that. We had wonderful participation. We had between three and 400 people participate either in the survey, or interviews, or other ways, so it was, it felt really good. We collected some demographics along the way, too, so it was, it seems to be a nicely representative group that participated. So what, what we'd like to do is share with you, in addition to the objectives of what we did, go through briefly the activities that, that were used to do the assessment, and we'd like to, to share with you some, some of the results. The results were, were very interesting. The needs that we learned about fell into four or five different categories, we'll share those with you. And then we tried to, as we moved toward what, what projects would be a good fit for Madera for the upcoming year, and the upcoming few years, we tried to find four or five broad, broad categories, or we call them goals here, that are consistent with the HUD requirements as well. And it's really important, and we'll talk more about this here in a few minutes, that the goals are broad enough, so that if, if, if there's a change in the local needs there two or three years from now, I mean, who could have anticipated a pandemic? But if, if the goals are broad enough, you can still, within the parameters of the consolidated plan, you can still put in activities that are consistent with that plan. So we'll be sharing with you some of those broad goals as well. But more, more interestingly, we'll be presenting to you at a high level, and I know, I know Dave Dibis will go into more detail, but we'd like to share with you at a high level, a little bit about the 17 projects, or at least list the 17 projects that, that we got proposals on, that you got proposals on, and then we'll talk about next steps. So if that's okay, I'll go ahead and, and get started here. And I'm, I'm a former teacher, so I won't, I won't read all, all the slides to you, I'll just, just, just try to point out some, some of the highlights here. When we talk about the objectives of the five-year plan, they really fall into two categories. One is the overall objectives, where, you know, there, there is, there is a CDBG, Community Development Block Grant requirement from HUD, that, that the plans are conducted. And secondly, and really more importantly, probably from your perspective, not just you check a box, but it helps really guide, guide strategies to the efficient use of funds, and not just money, but, but people and time and other resources, too. The second objective, really, the second broad category of the objectives, is what's, what's going on this evening. Starting this, starting the public comment period for, for what we've heard and for the projects that were proposed is really important. We have, we've collected a lot of community input so far, learned a lot, but now that there's, there's something specific for people to comment on going forward, that's a great part of this, this, this next phase as well. So we'll start that public comment period. The two pieces of the work that, that we've completed, or that we're completing with your assistance, is the analysis of impediments to fair housing and the consolidated plan itself. You can think of the analysis of impediments to fair housing like a foundation. It's a, it's a lot of information that provides some, some of the context to the housing issues and the challenges that, that people face there in Madera. The consolidated plan then goes into, describes the assessment, the needs, the goals, and the projects as, as well, in a very structured process. So we're going, going to take those real briefly here to give, give you a little update what we've learned so far. Again, I'm not going to read all these for you, but this information and the entire analysis of impediments to fair housing will be available for, for comment, but some of the highlights that I thought you might be interested in. The city identified the following actions as priorities. One is, and these, these do overlap a little bit, they're not fully discreet, but I think that, that's okay for, for this phase of it, is that, that, there's a need for, for fair housing information on the website and, and other accessible areas within the city. Secondly, education on fair housing for city staff members and administrators who, who oversee these, these programs. Again, this is more an information and, and education type need that the analysis identified. Third, identified that, that we need to continue to work with local agencies. Again, that's not surprising, but it did confirm the importance of, of that type of, that type of outreach and, and collaboration, to work with local agencies, as well as different partnering, partnering organizations, like the Housing Authority and the California Rural Legal Assistance Program and others. Number five, hugely important, to continue to comply with anti-discrimination requirements. This, this is on the forefront of, of all these programs, and it's, it's nice to see that the research that we did really supported that as well. And again, as you can tell, in doing this, this part of, of the assessment, there wasn't a lot of new sort of aha moments, but it really was confirmatory and validating a lot of those things we suspected, but there were a few new, new things as well. Number six and seven, to continue to implement policies and programs identified in the housing, in the housing element, and to implement zoning ordinance amendments that are necessary to further fair housing, and to continue the recommendations in the City of Madera ADA Self-Evaluation and Transition Plan. I, I could spend the next two hours talking about just this one document, but the, the point here is just to give you a little bit of, of a heads-up as to the type of document that it is, and some of the highlights that, that you can find in there. So I encourage you, take, take a little bit of time, take a look at this, this document, it's a nice read. Now, the second document that, that we're highlighting for you now is the consolidated plan. We love doing these things, they're so fascinating, they really are. The research itself that goes into it, that sort of assessment part of it, is, is wonderful. We got to speak with several of you on, on the call this evening. We spoke with a lot of community members, we included, I think the final number was 302 or 305, 312, different community members participated in, in a very helpful survey. We'll talk about that survey in just a few minutes. But the assessment part is always interesting, you always find some things that you suspect, and some things you don't, too, and I, I think that was the case here. The outcome of that assess, of the assessment was the needs, which lead to the goals, which led to the projects. And so they are all closely tied together, with the analysis of impediments to fair housing as that foundation that sets the context, the assessment that engages the community based on what we learned that identifies prioritized needs, which leads to goals, which leads to projects. So that's, that's sort of the, the logic flow of all this. Let me tell you just a few of the results now. As far as the activities, the things that we did, we looked at lots and lots of data, lots and lots and lots and lots and lots of data, which is good. Data is helpful, it's, it's sort of like, like the picture on the wall there, that, there in your office, or there in your home now, where the data is the frame around the picture, but it's not the picture. The picture is the people, it's the community, but the frame is necessary to help, help establish those, those parameters. So we looked at a lot of data, we, we interviewed stakeholders, veterans, people with disabilities, a lot of, or several of the interviews were conducted in, in, in Spanish, too, and that was, was an option for, for all of the interviews. We, we did our best to hold some community group meetings, we couldn't do them in person, so we tried to hold them virtually. Honestly, some, some went, went very well, others not so well, but, you know, we, we made a good effort and, and learned a lot that way, too. Outreach and exchange with different organizations, and of course, that, that survey. The survey was, was fascinating, like I said, about 300 responses, about 70% were from community members from Spanish-speaking households, very diverse demographics by age, gender, race, race and ethnicity. Let's talk a little bit about what we learned, though. I mean, the, doing the work was interesting, the results were even more interesting. The needs that we, that we learned about fell into five categories, and once again, as a reminder, these are all detailed in the consolidated plan that, that's going to be available for, for public comment, but we did want to point out, point out to you a few of the highlights. With those, those five, those five needs, again, no big surprise here, what are the housing needs? Rental units for people with extremely low, low house, low incomes, supply of housing for people on a fixed income. The third one's always interesting, because if, if there's a supply, if there's a capacity or a supply issue, that's one thing, that's, that can take a long time to address, but the third one can be addressed in several ways, and it's, it's not a big budget or a big time thing usually, it's, but, but it still takes focus, that's to raise public awareness and education, not just of the capacity, but among landlords, too. Some things for incentives for developers, emergency or transitional housing capacity. And, you know, I'm, we're fearful now, because some parts of the country are seeing this already, that because of the changing economy the past couple of months, there's more people who are anxious about, about the need for emergency or, or transitional housing as well. Specialized housing for veterans, I mean, you've, you've seen these, these before, but these, these came up very strongly in, in the assessment. Programs to help individuals with disabilities modify their homes. That's expensive to make it ADA, not just ADA compliant, but if, if you're a person living with, with a disability, to get that going, to get that home safe and comfortable for you is a challenge, is a challenge. The second of the five needs category is community services. Again, not to drag this out a long time, but as, as highlights, there's a need for awareness about available services there locally. Youth, youth centers and programs, expansion of alternative, alternatives to traditional sports. Obviously, obviously, that issue came up a lot the past couple of months with a lot of sporting, you know, sports fields closed, and, you know, that, that whole thing. Food distribution, public, public transportation. The third of these categories is economic development, and you, you might say, well, what, what does economic development, or, or even some of these other categories have to do with, with housing and urban development? Well, it's, there's a direct tie in that a lot of these economic development issues, whether it's jobs, job training, or literacy programs, or like we talked about a moment, a moment ago, youth programs and things, those are things that, that make housing more successful for, for, for people in the community. To have those things in your neighborhood increases the viability of those different neighborhoods. So if you're thinking, like some people have commented previously, you know, can you clarify the connection between these sort of out-of-the-mainstream type categories in housing? That's why, because they really do, they really are part and parcel of, of a broader housing initiative. The same with public improvements in infrastructure, streetlights, sidewalks, that's part of our neighborhood, those, those came up as well as, as the needs in, in our areas. And last but not, not least certainly is the needs of those experiencing homelessness. And it's not just the capacity, it's not just those, those homes for, for people who don't have them, but it's, it's, it's activities and support programs to help, to help the people who are experiencing homelessness survive and live more comfortably. Things like awareness of where showers and other life support issues might, might be found, that type of referral service, access to food and clothing, those types of informational programs also came up very strongly during the needs assessment. So take, taking a breath here, and I know we're, we want to move along, but I want to just point out that the needs assessment, one, was, was built on a very solid platform, and given the, the challenges, like, like we all know, we got good feedback from a lot of very interested, very enthusiastic people on this call and, and in the community, that led to a pretty broad set of needs. Based on those needs, and you, you saw this graph earlier, just to sort of reorient you a little bit, based on the assessment and the needs that we learned about, some, some of those broad goals that we mentioned earlier fell into these categories. Again, these are broad categories into which the 17 projects are going to fit, which you'll hear about in just a moment. The five broad categories are to increase access to affordable housing, access to community services, enhanced well-being, enhanced quality of the infrastructure, and prevent or reduce homelessness. Again, these, these are broad categories largely defined or referred to by HUD, so these, these are categories that we want these projects to fall into, and honestly, I was very pleased with the list of projects that were submitted. So I'm going to just walk through this list, and I know Dave Dibis is all queued up and ready to go into more detail with each of these, along with presenting, presenting to you some ideas about how, how to, how to align, align the funding. But I thought you might be interested just to take a quick walkthrough, these projects that, that were proposed, that proposals were, were, were received by. Local administration. Again, this is, this activity, like it says here, funds, funds labor and overhead costs associated with carrying out the oversight of the CDBG program. City of Madera Human Resource Administration, consulting services to ensure ADA compliance in, in access to programs and facilities. CAPMC Administration. City of Madera Parks and Community Services, senior nutrition programs and rec programs. programs and rec programs, rescue mission down here. And once again, these are in no particular order as far as one through seventeen. Big Brothers and Big Sisters, Doors of Hope, and I know we have someone from Doors of Hope on the call now. Community Action Partnership of New York County and Fresno, Madeira Continuum of Care, homeless funding, requesting ten thousand dollars there for, to help with the point in time survey and some related costs. Pacinos Emprestarios, Childcare Development, Help Children Improve Personal Development, Madeira Coalition for Justice. Okay, so Habitat for Humanity, Parks and Rec, McNally Park Rehab, City of Madeira Engineering Sidewalk Ramps, this is something we heard about repeatedly during a lot of the interviews. All of these were. Engineering Department for the sidewalk improvements around the middle school. Installation of flashing stop signs at Lake and Adele, I mean, these are all engineering projects, those past couple. Large project here from Engineering Department to improve the intersection of D and South by Washington School and the City of Madeira Engineering Department again for ADA compliant at the front desk counter there to convert the area, make it more ADA compliant. So taking a breath, I just kind of went through a big laundry list. There's a lot there. The products are diverse in many ways. Some are similar, some are more focused on infrastructure and public improvements, some more on housing and specific support of individuals and families, but it seems to be a good mix of projects that certainly do, I mean, we could easily link every one of these seventeen projects to those goals and to those needs like we talked about earlier. So where do we go from here? Well, in just a moment, Dave Dibis is going to go back through this list and talk to you in more details about them. But after this evening's meeting comes the public comment period, and it's, that's a great opportunity, whether you're a community member like Steve Copeland was earlier that called in or others that might be calling in or might read this, it's a great opportunity to, you know, take a little bit of time, read through the analysis of impediments, read through the consolidated plan. If you don't want to read the whole thing, look at the projects and see what you think. Share some thoughts and share some comments. That's what this thirty day period is all about. At the end of that, we'll make any adjustments to the consolidated plan and bring it back to you for your final approval. With that, we submit it to HUD in early August and off we go. And an important part of that is the one-year action plan, which says specifically, what are those projects that are going to be taking place right away in year one? So with that said, Dave, if you're on the line here.
Yes, I am.
Go ahead and stop sharing and I'll let you take over.
Thank you. Appreciate it Scott. Appreciate you and your staff helping me, working with the city, working with all the departments as well as the citizens to provide this report to the city moving forward the next five years. It was a grand effort. I think we got a little, got to roll our sleeves up and really got down to it, and I think we got a good product here and looking forward to moving forward with it and getting it up to HUD and getting their comments and just working together with them and yourself to move these projects forward. So thank you so much. Appreciate it.
Our pleasure entirely David. You've been great to work with and look forward to the next few months till we, you know, you guys get rolling still on these projects.
Right. Thank you.
Our pleasure. Thank you.
Okay. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, council members. We're going to move to the next phase of the presentation for the annual action plan. The ones that Scott went over, we're going to look at what the block grant commission recommended. They went through the, they went through all the applications with due diligence and came up with some recommendations for the council to consider tonight. These are tentative, these are tentative recommendations. Since we do have thirty days for public comment, we will be coming back, I believe, July twenty second for the finalizing of, I guess, the consolidated plan, the analysis of impediments as well as the action plan to get those up to HUD. We have a deadline of August fifteenth to get this all wrapped up and up to them, so it's a tight turnaround, but I think we are still allowing enough time for citizens as well as anybody else who wants to participate, to provide feedback in the next thirty days that we can wrap this up in the meeting or just make whatever tweaks that might, you know, come up in the review period to move forward with these projects. So with that, I'm going to go over the applications that were submitted for the annual action plan. We had nine hundred eleven thousand seven twenty-five that was allocated to us for the 2021 fiscal year. So moving forward.
Mr. Dibis?
Yes.
Mayor Madeline, I'm sorry to interrupt. We're going to take these three tables separately, I'm assuming. Is that correct? Starting with admin and then moving forward from there. The reason I ask is for the tentative public services allocations, a council member is going to recuse himself over just that particular table. If we can just take them three separately and then give me an opportunity to have them recuse themselves when we get to public service.
Public services? Okay, okay.
Mr. Mayor, it'd be two of us.
Thank you very much for that reminder. So I'm sorry, Mr. Dibis, go ahead and continue.
Okay. When I go through the presentation, should we stop at each point? And I was, that was going to coordinate the recommendations by the council based on what the BGC recommended. Should we do it that way?
Yeah, if we can take them three separate tables and we'll do them separately.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Appreciate it. Okay, so to continue with the tonight's public hearing, you will be receiving the block grant commission's recommendations for the annual action plan allocations. There were seventeen applications that were provided to the block grant commission for review, and like I said, this is for tentative allocations. We will come back at the end of July to approve the final allocation. So just a little bit of a background, we started the community activities began at the end of March. We held three meetings with the block grant commission to do the kickoff as well as review all the applications between actually the annual action plan and the COVID ones that we'll be doing shortly after this presentation, once we review the allocations. As Scott had said, they conducted, the Chuseno Consulting Group conducted the seven focus group meetings and obtained three hundred and two surveys in this process. We did present before the council back in April fifteenth and this, of course, tonight to present the actual final reports in draft form, and we're going to have the recommendations reviewed and then we'll kick off the thirty day review period starting tomorrow. So the first part was the seventeen, we leave seventeen applications, and as you can see, we received a little over nine hundred thousand that was allocated and we received one million six hundred and change for requests for grants. As you can see, three for admin, seven for public service and seven for capital projects. Starting with the block grant allocation recommendations, we had three applicants. Of course, we have our own grants department, which is the local administration one, and that's to administrate the grants and do the subrecipient monitoring as well as any other training that's required or requested, as well as outreach during the annual year. The HR department submitted a application for a survey that was due to come up. They needed to update some of their goals and needs for their ADA compliance in buildings throughout the city. And then CAPMC headed application for twenty thousand dollars for regarding to their, representing the city worth of point in time count that's held annually for the homeless evaluations. We had two hundred eighty-three thousand five hundred, as you can see, for a requested amount and the recommendation, the twenty percent max that happens with HUD, that's a fixed amount, it's twenty percent for admin, fifteen percent for public service, and then if those caps are met, if there's anything left over, we go back to the capital projects where any leftovers money is going to be moved down there. So with that, shall we go over the admin portion of the allocations or keep moving to the service?
What I'd like to do, Mr. Dibis, if I may, we have the chair of the block grant commission with us, Mr. Ken Hutchings. I'd like to introduce him as the chair, and I know we have other members of the BGC with us and personally thank them for their work. I know Scott had mentioned it, Ebed had mentioned it, but they have really, really done some extensive work over the months, meeting with the applicants, reviewing the multi-page applications and getting us to this point. So their recommendations are very much appreciated, and if I could, I know we're sharing the screen here, but if Mr. Hutchings can just say hello to us, because more than likely there'll be some questions of BGC and he can represent everybody, but I just wanted to say thank you very much, Ken, to you and all the members of the commission who have done such fantastic work so far with these applications.
Yeah, Mayor and Council, yeah, I'd also like to acknowledge the work of my fellow committee members and also acknowledge that two of them are online right now, Candy Tally and DJ Becker, and I hope that they have unmuted their computers so that they can feel free to jump in if they have any comments or whatever. But yeah, it was a pleasure to work on this, and one of the things that did make this year somewhat special was to have the two different sets of CDBG funding, not only for the consolidated plan, but also for the COVID nineteen and trying to alleviate the impacts of the COVID nineteen. And because of that, that did impact our decisions because of the additional set of fundings. But there were a lot of good projects there and like I said, joined working with them, my fellow committee members, and we will be happy to answer any questions as they come up as the council reviews these projects.
Great. Ken, thank you very much. Ms. Becker, Ms. Tally, anything to add?
Not at this time.
Great. Thank you very, very much for your service. So with that, Mr. Dibis, we'll bring it back to the admin portion and maybe we can now go through the ask, the recommendation, and then again, are we looking for council direction from that or approval?
It'll be council direction. It's tentative allocations that the block grant commission made. This will be tentative allocations that city council will make. We will come back at the July twenty-second meeting to finalize, since this is tied to the consolidated plan, we do have that opportunity to give it some time, let people, you know, to analyze the con plan as well as the proposals as we're moving forward. Next year and moving forward for the following four, we'll be coming and talking just directly about getting approval for the allocations that night, but as part of this first year of the five-year plan, we're just tying this into the thirty day period.
Thank you very much for that. And just as a quick reminder, as we share the screen here, I'll ask my colleagues or anybody for that matter, if you're wishing to speak, there's the little hand wave emoji or you can chat with me, or sometimes even this works, but I'm trying to manage forty-one squares at one time plus the screen you see before you. So I will get to you as quick as possible, but I'm going to go ahead and dive in on the admin here, on the local admin. Local administration, one sixty-three five is the request and the recommendation of the BGC is equivalent to that. But the HR administration, what they're asking for, for the ADA compliance is a hundred thousand dollars and the BGC recommended eighteen eight forty-five, which is pretty much just the balance that was left over, whereas CAPMC, which we have funded before and the eighteen thousand is so close to fulfilling their request. Can I ask Mr. Hutchings or your representatives, maybe the thought process on giving less than twenty percent to HR that wouldn't totally fund them versus almost funding the CAPMC admin?
Okay, well, part of it was one of these situations, as I indicated earlier, CAPMC also had an application for the COVID nineteen, and so we basically gave them funds from COVID nineteen and then decided to allocate the funding for the ADA, the ADA action plan, basically, which is what this is all about. This is, we figured this is probably going to have to be an installment kind of thing because it is only partial funding and they eventually are going to need a hundred thousand dollars to do that, the new plan, the updated ADA transition plan.
Thank you for that. That was my assumption, and so my next question would be, since there's sometimes restrictions or stringent requirements, would CAPMC be able to use some of that COVID nineteen money towards admin?
I will have Mr. Dibis. I'd like to refer that to him.
Okay.
No, I believe that strictly for, to prevent the coronavirus and to do preventative measures as such that will, you know, bring up again later this public hearing, the next one, but just for specific annual admin needs that wouldn't qualify.
Thank you for that clarification. I'll ask any of my colleagues on the council if they have any questions or comments towards this first portion under administration. I noticed the seven members of council, Mr. Dibis, are you looking to get authorization from each council member? Is that what I'm seeing in front of me here?
Yes, I was, wanted to, I think just to get input from each council member, just to get their insight on what they feel would be a fair allocation based on the consolidated plan, action plan that was submitted and as well as just the needs in the community.
Great. You know what? That might make it easier as well. So I will ask, well, Councilman Rodriguez raised his hand right now, so I'll go to his question and then we will start down the line with council to get their comments. So Councilman Rodriguez.
No, I think the question was answered already, Mayor Madeline. I wasn't sure that, you know, there wasn't any really comments from council, so I wasn't sure if we were going to just move on this item here, but I heard what Mr. Dibis had said. I think he wants to hear directly from the council.
Yeah.
I was looking forward to moving forward on this here since it's already outlined and I didn't hear any comments from the other council members, but I'll go ahead and hold my comments.
Thank you. Councilman Montes.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Montes. So I just had a question on the allocation for, or lack of, for CAPMC admin. And also for the HR admin, is this an ongoing project? Because the ask was for one hundred thousand and the allocation is only eighteen eight forty-five. So I know in the past, you know, and I don't want to, you know, make this longer than it has to be, but in the past, you know, some of the concerns that we got from HUD was that we were kind of socking away money. I know we received a letter on that because we weren't actually expending the monies. So is this something that, one, it's going to have to be a five-year allocation to meet that one hundred thousand dollars? And what was the rationale for signing CAPMC zero?
Yeah, that was pretty much kind of the same thoughts that I had had. Is it strictly going to be CDBG funding for HR or is it going to be general fund or another funding source that would meet the need to reach that hundred thousand dollars?
And also, I know Wendy Silva has been invited to speak as well as, I believe, the representatives from CAPMC are available to speak also, so I'm not sure about protocol. A little bit new at the process, especially going through this on Zoom, but I didn't know whether this would be an opportune time to hear from them possibly, or is that something we would wait till the end?
No, I think that would be appropriate because I think there's a couple of questions that Ms. Silva may help us with exactly what the funding would be used for and what are the plans if you don't get completely funded, the hundred thousand dollars, what would then be the plans to fulfill that remainder?
Mr. Mayor, if I may, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, very good. We have given Okay, very good. We have given direct instruction to the applicants that if they do make a presentation, to limit their presentations to three minutes, as we did last year. So I will be taking, I'll be the timer, so that it does not exceed three minutes. And the reason for that is to be fair to all applicants and that they all have the same amount of time to explain their projects to the Council. So everybody is prepared to give a presentation if Council so desires. But I will be taking time and limiting it to three minutes and letting you know when the three minutes approach.
Thank you, Yvette. So we have Ms. Silva with us, and also one of the attendees with the last three numbers, one-seven-three, wishing to speak. You will be after Ms. Silva, just in preparation. Wendy, are you with us?
Yes.
Great.
So at a very high level, what we're requesting is to update the city's ADA self-evaluation and transition plan. We began the current plan in two thousand and seven. It took us three years to complete because we were cobbling together funding at that time. The plan at that time cost a hundred thousand dollars to develop. We're required legally to have one. It's part of Title II of the Americans with Disabilities Act. We also have to certify to Caltrans every year that we have one and that we're working on it to remain eligible for state and federal funding. So all that said, once I saw the Block Grant Commission's allocation, I I went back and I looked at our insurance reserve fund. The the hundred thousand dollars at this point is our best guesstimate. I went back to the consulting firm who conducted our last self-evaluation and transition plan for us. It cost a hundred thousand in two thousand and seven. So I asked them, how much does it cost today? A brand-new plan for an entity of our size is between two hundred and two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. But what they're thought was that we could potentially do it sort of like an addendum to the existing plan. We don't have to look at things we already looked at, because it is facilities, programs, policies, and public right-of-way. But we could potentially do an addendum for anything that is new since the last plan or anything that case law has changed on. So an example of case law that's changed, when we wrote the last plan, it didn't exist yet. But now we have to have a a plan for like our downtown public parking to help it be more accessible, things like that. That's what we need to address in this plan. So going back to the funding, I I spent the afternoon looking at the insurance reserve fund, looking at the fund balance, looking at the current year operating budget that was adopted last night. We do have a fund balance that complies with our policy, so I'm not worried about fund balance in the insurance reserve fund. The operating budget has a little bit of wiggle room. So will this happen? Yes, because we need to make it happen. So what I I guess I'm leading up to is, if you would like to use this funding for something else that's more beneficial to the community, I'll make sure that we do what we can to fund as much as possible out of the insurance reserve fund and still make sure that the ADA self-evaluation update happens. Will I take CDBG funding and use it if you?
Thirty seconds remaining.
Absolutely. However, if if I don't, I will do as much as I can with money from the insurance reserve fund.
Thank you, Wendy. I appreciate that. I think that answered a lot of questions. Councilman Rodriguez.
Thank you, Mayor Madeline. So that being said, I know there was another question posed regarding CAPMC and COVID, CDBG for COVID. So did we satisfy CAPMC's request to COVID? And is this another, is this an added request and with respect to the regular CDBG that we have here? So I know that, Mr. Dibis, you were chiming in in regards to you having to satisfy or at least added some funding to to CAPMC through our COVID.
I know, and Mr. Hutchings had stated, there was, we were looking at all the applications all at once. So that kind of, you know, like Mr. Hutchings said, drove the Block Grant Commission's decisions in some in some way. You'll see with the COVID monies, CAPMC requested fifty thousand dollars for utility assistance for water and sewer. They also asked for ninety thousand dollars to help homelessness for rental assistance, keep people from becoming homeless. So and they were, Block Grant Commission did recommend the ninety thousand for the for the rental assistance. They did not recommend the fifty thousand for the utility allowance assistance. So that's that I know. And like I said, with the CAPMC admin, that's that's completely different from anything with COVID. They're doing the point-in-time count on an annual basis. They represent the city with the point-in-time count, as well as as well as representing us with organizations and and to get more funding through HUD and other sources, as they stated in their application.
I'd like to make a clarification for Councilmember Rodriguez, if I may, Mr. Mayor. Their request under administration is strictly to offer an administrative function, whereas their other requests are for service. This is an administration request that they are proposing to continue to do the point-in-time count and 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 do that, that is required to be done as a recipient of CDBG HUD funds. So either the city will do it, or we offer an allocation to an organization to carry out those functions.
With that, with that, I have an attendee that I've that has been patiently waiting, and then Elizabeth Weisner from CAPMC has a comment. So I will go to the attendee, last number, one-seven-three. Are you with us?
Yes, I am, Mayor. This is Maddie, and I will relinquish my time to Elizabeth. This is Maddie Mendez from CAPMC.
Thank you, Maddie. Elizabeth? Ms. Weisner, are you with us? I see she's on screen. She's just muted, that's all.
Can you hear me now?
Yes, we can. Good evening.
Oh, I apologize for that.
No problem.
I think the last of the last few people who spoke summarized our grant application perfectly. I I do want to add that CAPMC has been blessed to have represented the City of Madera for the since two thousand and ten on the Fresno-Madera Continuing of Care. And as a result, funds have come into Madera to serve the homeless. And we have coordinated the homeless count since at least two thousand and ten. If if we are not funded, then we would need to relinquish that that service to the city.
Thank you, Elizabeth, for your comments. I appreciate that. Again, it's it's the separate admin, which is what we funded for CAPMC in previous years, so that you can administer those additional funds. With that, if we if we can go back to that screen that showed the Council members, and let's let's go, Councilmember Robinson, I believe, is first, and we can go down the line. Can we get that screen back up, please?
Do you hear me?
Yeah, we can hear you. Give me just a quick second so we can get the the screen back up, Mr. Councilman. So what I will ask my colleagues of is is your thoughts as it pertains to the three applications we have, starting with Councilman Robinson and the first local administration of the one hundred and sixty-three thousand five hundred, if you want to give us your thoughts.
Okay, what was it last year again, two hundred something thousand for the local administration?
I'm sorry, last year?
Yes.
I believe it is in the one hundred and fifty thousand dollar range, I believe, one hundred and fifty-six thousand.
Okay, so it's around the same same amount.
Yes.
So I feel comfortable with that. And for the administration, it was requested a hundred thousand. And what's available is what, one hundred eighty-two thousand? Why is it so low for the Block Grant Commission?
So I do want to remind Council of a couple of things before you begin the process. From the nine hundred and eleven thousand, seven hundred and twenty-five dollars that we have for this annual allocation. I want to remind Council that there is a requirement of not exceeding twenty percent for administration.
Okay.
So the maximum amount that you can allocate for administration is a hundred and eighty-two thousand dollars, three hundred and forty-five. You have three requests, one from local administration, that's the City of Madera Grants Department, that has requested one hundred and sixty-three thousand dollars, five hundred. You have a second request from City of Madera Human Resource Department, and that department has requested one hundred thousand dollars for their ADA project. And you have a third request from CAPMC, and it's also administration, and that is twenty thousand dollars. And what they intend to do with that is continue to do the work that was just mentioned, the point-in-time count, which is which is required by HUD. So all of those cannot exceed, I'm sorry, all of those tally up to two hundred and eighty-three thousand. But you cannot exceed a hundred and eighty-two under this category.
Oh, okay.
And the Block Grants Commission recommendations are highlighted in yellow. The Block Grant Commission is recommending that you fund the local administration, again, that's the City of Madera Grants Department, at one hundred and sixty-three, and and so on. They're proposing eighteen thousand for the Human Resource Department, and they are not recommending that you fund CAPMC under administration this year.
Oh, okay, well, if they're not going to recommend it, then then I'm sure that we have to go along with the guidelines. Also, I attend the MC, CAPMC. Once this year, would this allow me to comment, I mean, to vote on this?
You're you're not an active board member, are you, Mr. Councilman?
No.
No. So so you would be fine. So we're asking for your record for, we have, we have what's requested. We have the Block Grant Commission's recommendation, and now we're asking individual Council members for their recommendation.
All right, well, I recommend it, you know, the guidelines, what what they recommend it. I'm I'm on board.
Mr. Mayor, do you want to go across each each request, or do you?
No, I want to, I wanted each Council member to speak on all three of these at once.
Very good. Okay, Councilman Robinson, what's your recommendation for local administration?
For local administration?
Yes, sir.
Well, I recommend what they for the Black Grant Commission, you know, what they went, what they approved. Can't go over twenty percent.
Yeah, so that we can't, you can't exceed one hundred and eighty-two thousand under this category. So at the end, Council is restricted to one hundred and eighty-two thousand dollars, three hundred and forty-five, distributed across the board. You don't have to distribute that much, but that's the maximum.
Can I think about it and 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 come back at me at the end?
Okay.
Thank you.
I'll move on to Councilwoman Diego's.
Um, I'm going to shift it just a little because I've done point and count for the last couple of years, and we are running really thin and lean in the city right now. I can't imagine who would take this on in our city and and have direction to run with that. And that is really important for us to have those numbers. So I'm going to do the local administration one fifty-three, five hundred, and and the HR ADA, eight thousand, eight hundred and forty-five, and then CAPMC, twenty thousand.
Will you repeat your amount for HR, Council?
Eight thousand, eight hundred and forty-five.
Thank you.
And twenty thousand CAPMC. If somebody else has a better idea or something else to throw out there, I'm willing to change that at any time.
Thank you, Councilwoman, for your comments. Moving on to Mayor Protem Garcia.
Yes, I approve the Block Grant Committee recommendation as it is.
Thank you. And I will move on to Councilman Rodriguez.
Mr. Mayor, I I'd like to see that the local administration received the one sixty-two, three forty-five. And then
What's sixty-two?
One sixty-two, three forty-five, so that you can grant the remaining amount to the CAPMC of twenty thousand, and that would leave the HR administration at zero. And only because of what our current staff, Wendy, had suggested, is that there might be other monies that we can certainly get. I'd hate, going back to what Councilmember Montes had said, is that, you know, leaving money here for quite some time without really putting something together, let's put it to use. And I think CAPMC can certainly use that for the point and count and and to shift that from the local administration. So that's where I sit.
Thank you, Mr. Councilman. Yvette, you you put Councilman Rodriguez's numbers in my slot. That's okay, leave it, because that's exactly what I was going to suggest as well. So if you do want to just duplicate those in Councilman Rodriguez's slot, make things a whole lot easier. And I will now ask Councilman Montes for his thoughts.
Well, that's what that's what I was thinking as well. And but I do feel I do need to disclose that I am a voting member on CAPMC board. My understanding was that as long as we disclose it, I do not have to recuse myself, but I will if that's the will of the Council.
As far as I'm concerned, that's a that's a question for our city attorney. I I agree with you. I thought that was, as long as it was disclosed, but
Yeah, I got a letter that says that that's what I'm supposed to do, so.
If you're comfortable, if you're comfortable with that, Mr. Councilman, then
I'm comfortable with that.
Thank you very much. Councilman Holly. Are you with us, Mr. Councilman?
Well, you can go back to me now.
Is Donald muted? I can't tell, or is he is he just not with us?
I'm here, I'm here.
Mr. Councilman.
Can you hear me?
We can hear you now.
Okay, I would like to acknowledge that I am a board member for CAPMC, but I also agree with the requirements that was submitted by the other three councilmen. For a hundred and sixty-two thousand for local administration, zero for HR, and twenty thousand for CAPMC.
Thank you very much, Mr. Councilman.
Yeah, that was Councilman.
That's that's in the that's in the wrong slot, Yvette, yeah.
Sorry about that.
Don't make me look like Derek.
Speaking of Derek, we'll go back to Councilman Robinson.
Yes, I think I would like to go the same as Jose.
And I'm not sure if if the Block Grant Commission was privy to some of the information that Wendy had provided us this evening. Sometimes it's that new or different information that can that can make make matters a little bit different. And so in light of what Wendy's information is, and also the comments by Ms. Weisner, and also the 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 past history, funding CAPMC for many years through CDBG funding and the fantastic work they do with the point-in-time count. I I think it's money well spent, so I'm very confident with those numbers. That being said, Yvette, it seems like at this point, it's it's a majority rule, so to speak.
That being said, Yvette, it seems like at this point, it's a majority rule, so to speak.
A motion would be appropriate for an amount.
I motion Councilman Rodriguez's amount of one sixty-three...
One sixty-two.
One sixty-two, I can't see that far, my screen is really little, three forty-five, and zero to HR, and twenty thousand to CAPMC.
Second.
Okay, if there's no further discussion, it's been moved to give or allow the local administration one hundred and sixty-three thousand, three forty-five, zero to HR, admin, and twenty thousand dollars to CAPMC by Councilwoman Gallegos, and seconded by Councilman Rodriguez.
Mr. Mayor, I will just add that you did say one sixty-three, the amount is one sixty-two, three forty-five to the local admin.
My apologies, I did, one sixty-two, three forty-five. Thank you for clarifying that, with twenty thousand to CAPMC admin. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries unanimously. One down, two more to go. Now, the second one is going to be the public services allocations. We'll do this again. At this time, I'll ask Mayor Protem Garcia if he still wishes to recuse himself. This, it's, was it this one, or under the capital improvement, Mayor Protem?
No, it was a public service.
The public services, because of the Coalition for Community Justice, is that correct?
So as I said before, when I was first elected, I was, one of my daughters is a a community organizer with one of the nonprofits that is competing with the others, and I feel it would be a conflict of interest, even though there are no financial benefits to myself, or, and also include that an improper, an appearance of impropriety, and therefore I choose to recuse myself, and thank you very much to the Block Grant Committee. I'll return when you ask me to, Mr. Mayor. Thank you very much.
Absolutely, thank you. Let the record show that Mayor Protem Garcia has recused himself during the tentative public services allocations. With that, Mr. Dibas or Ms. Yereta, let's move forward.
Mr. Mayor, before you do, what's on the public, because if you have the Big Brothers, Big Sisters, I would have to excuse myself.
Because you are a board member, Mr. Councilman?
Yes, sir.
Let the record show that Councilman Holly will recuse himself under the public services allocation due to his status as a board member for Big Brothers, Big Sisters. Anyone else?
Mr. Mayor, just for the, just for the meeting, when either Councilmember Dolly or Councilmember Garcia are recusing themselves, are they completely recusing themselves from the meeting? Meaning they're able to listen to the audio, or I just want to make sure we're doing this correctly? Because typically, when they recuse themselves, they leave the meeting.
Yeah, they have, they have no input whatsoever, or take part in any of the discussion. As far as having audio, as long as their screen is black and they're not seen, they're fine.
Okay.
Thank you for that.
Okay.
I'm sorry, if Councilman Holly can remove the video from his screen, I would appreciate it. Thank you, sir. Let's move forward.
Okay, at this point, we'll be moving to the public service category. We have five applications being considered. There, the recommendations, I will be turning it over to the screen in just a minute. At this point, I wanted to let you know that we requested that each applicant have a representative here tonight, should council have any questions. And again, if they make a presentation, I will be taking time, and in the interest of being fair to everybody, I recommend that we keep it to three minutes, and they are aware of that request. So if council desires to hear a presentation from any of the applicants, please state so. I will share my screen and show you who has applied. Can you see the screen, Mr. Mayor?
Yes, we can, Yvette, thank you.
Okay, so that is Big Brothers, Big Sisters of Central California High Schools, big program. They have requested ten thousand dollars. Doors of Hope Parenting Center, Building Better Parents, they have requested fifteen thousand, three hundred. And we have the Community Action Partnership of Madera County. They have requested ten thousand dollars, Pequeños Empresarios has requested twenty-three thousand, eight hundred, and Madera Coalition for Community Justice with a three thousand dollar, eight hundred and fifty request. That totals to a total ask of two hundred twenty-two thousand, nine hundred and fifty, whereas the maximum that can be distributed under this category is a hundred and thirty-six thousand, seven hundred and fifty-nine. That is fifteen percent of the total's annual allocation. So again, the requests exceed the maximum. I will remind council that the maximum is one hundred and thirty-six thousand. However, you do not have to utilize all of that under this category. If you do not desire to, you can move it over to capital projects.
Yvette? Yvette, I think we're missing Parks and Community Services.
Yeah, there's two lines that are hidden.
Lines one and two are gone.
Yeah.
And the Rescue Mission.
Need to scroll up.
Yeah, there you go.
There you go.
All right.
There you go, okay.
Okay, I'm sorry, Madera, City of Madera Parks and Community Service, Senior Nutrition and Recreation Program has requested one hundred thousand, and the Madera Rescue Mission has requested thirty thousand. Again, totaling two hundred and twenty-two thousand being requested in public services. That is seven organizations, and Mr. Mayor, if you want to hear from any of the applicants, they are ready to make up to three-minute presentations. Or answer any questions.
Thank you, Yvette. I will first ask if council has any questions regarding just this table that we see before us. Seeing none, I'm going to ask Ms. Sue Kern, she would like to speak on behalf of Madera Coalition for Community Justice. Ms. Kern, are you with us?
I'm here.
Fantastic. Yes, we can. Thank you, welcome.
Thank you. I would just like to say a few words about my work with Madera Coalition Youth Leaders. I've been on the board for about twenty-eight years now. Madera Coalition Youth Leaders started in two thousand and one, and over the past almost twenty years, many of them have graduated out of youth leaders because they're in the program when they're in high school. Most of them are between fifteen and eighteen years old. Many of them have gone on to do things in the city, everything from being a reporter for the newspaper to working for the city. Many of them have gone on to college. The goal of the program that we're in is to try and involve youth in the community and get them understanding their role as civic engagement with the community. The projects we've been working on the past few years have been involving environmental issues, whether it's air quality in schools, air quality because of traffic and alternatives to public transportation. Many of the youth, because of their participation in the program, have gone on to be active volunteers in the community doing various projects. The youth leaders help with our food distribution program, which serves several hundred people a week. They've helped with the tree planting programs when we get a grant for the relief program. They've done community forums, they've done voter information sessions. They had one this February where people could come and speak about issues for the election. But the purpose of it and the outcome of it has been to engage youth in programs in the community that make them active citizens, and they go on to be adults that are actively involved in the community. It's always been about service learning. We have a lot of people, a lot of youth that are volunteering with Madera Coalition afterwards, and I just think it's a really valuable program. We did this last year. We got them involved in curriculum that has STEM emphasis, so that they're actually learning about environmental issues. They're learning about science, they're learning about math, they're learning all of those kind of things in the course of being part of Madera Coalition and the youth leaders, and we're very proud of the program. We've had a lot of wonderful graduates that have gone on to be great citizens in Madera County, and we hope that you continue to fund us because it's a very important program. And I'd be glad to answer any questions that any of the council members have about it.
Thank you very much, Ms. Kern. We appreciate you being here this evening. Last night's council meeting, we had high school age and college-age students here with us from the Youth Leadership Institute, which is much like what you're doing here with the youth leaders. This is exactly what HUD is looking for, to invest in our community, invest in our youth, invest in our future leaders. And you have really done a fantastic job with our youth. So thank you very, very much for being here. I'll ask my colleagues if there's any questions of Ms. Kern regarding the application. Seeing none, I know Councilman Montes has a question, and then I will ask Mr. Chavez from the Madera County Rescue Mission after that to speak. Councilman Montes.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I couldn't find the raise hand button fast enough when you asked for questions earlier.
No problem.
Are we going to go down the line and have everybody speak? Okay, so my question can kind of wait, because it was kind of related to...
Well, actually, no. Normally, what I do is I go down the line and I call up each and every person to speak. And in the spirit of time, and the amount that has been requested, I think unless absolutely necessary, we don't need to have everybody speak. But during discussions about allocations, if at that time somebody did want to speak or clarify, I'll certainly recognize you at that point. So I'm only asking now those that wish to speak prior to. Did you have a follow-up, Councilman Montes?
Well, I guess my question was kind of related to the last section where CAPMC was asking for the allocation for FMCOC activities. The last one was admin, and this one looks like it's a zero allocation again. And since we've allocated the admin, does it make sense that we would allocate that again? And I kind of wanted to hear from them, so it's up to you, Mr. Mayor, if you want to call them.
Okay, and then maybe what we might want to do is ask the Chair, Mr. Hutchings, since they've gone through all the applications, and they have a particular reason and formula as to how they came up with these recommendations. So maybe Mr. Hutchings can shed some light on that particular line item. CAPMC, they requested ten thousand dollars, and the BGC had said zero.
Hey, can I see the graph again, please? That would assist me, or the spreadsheet, I should say. Okay, and I welcome the input of Ms. Tally and Ms. Becker on this too. But the committee, for the most part, or the commission, I should say, was very admiring of the work that the Meals on Wheels, that the Parks Department does with Meals on Wheels. And so we were looking very favorably on that. We also looked very, very favorably on the Madera Rescue Mission. And so we did have a concern with the Parks and Community Services because we understood that we were not able to specifically earmark the funds for the Meals on Wheels, which I guess are sort of a subset of the whole senior nutrition program or whatever. But we were, there were like three different categories or whatever. So what you see there is basically about a one-third allocation, and like I said, it was the commission's hope that this would be utilized for the Meals on Wheels, which we thought would be really beneficial for the seniors here in the, within the community there. And so, and with all the others that were fully funded, the Big Brothers, Big Sisters, and also Doors of Hope, we felt that those were very good organizations providing a much-needed service. And same thing with the Coalition for Community Justice. And so with the Pequeños Empresarios, we wanted to acknowledge the work that they did, but there just wasn't enough funds for doing that. And I'm going to have to, I will have to rely on the memory of my colleagues there on the commission regarding the CAPMC and what our thought process was on that, because it doesn't come to mind at the moment.
Address that. The CAPMC over on the COVID was awarded, according to what we have put aside, is ninety thousand. And we only have so much money, and to be able to give, we felt like this was their ninety thousand here was very important. Not that the other wasn't, but again, we only have so much money, and so we chose the ninety on the COVID.
Thank you, Ms. Tally. Ms. Becker, do you have something to add?
I do. I did a little research and spoke with John Scarborough about the request of their hundred thousand, and my research indicated that it was for an expansion of the program. It was not, this is not defunding the meals program. This was a request to add one shelf-stable meal each day to the hundred and fifty recipients because they had no space in the freezer for any additional frozen meals. And these were not homebound seniors, in that these were the folks that had been at the community centers getting the meals at the buffet in the congregate settings. And then a note of clarification on the Meals for Wheels, that is a separate organization. We're not able to use any of this money for Meals on Wheels because that group is administered out of Fresno. They have separate funding, and they have not presented a proposal to us. So I think that clarification is important. So we felt that while we would like to give the seniors extra food, that this could be duplicative because there's lots of surplus food available, and they're already getting meals, frozen meals delivered. So again, it was a prioritization of trying to prioritize the most important services.
Great, thank you.
Excuse me, Mayor.
I'm sorry, is that Mr. Scarborough?
Yes, yes. I'm sorry, there seems to be a little bit of confusion. The Shelf Stable Meals Program was actually the COVID-19 application. The application that you're considering now is, this is our congregate meal program. This is our, for lack of a better term, our bread and butter senior meal program that is served out of the two senior centers. So the Shelf Stable Meals was the COVID-19. It was, in fact, intended to supplement an existing program.
Okay.
In looking through the recommendations, it's recommended to not be funded at all. This program here is our Cadillac program. This is the one that we use to support our full suite of senior services throughout the course of every fiscal year.
This is not just meals, Mr. Scarborough, but this is the recreation, there's Zoom advances, and all the interactions and programs we do for our seniors at our senior centers, correct?
That's absolutely correct. A meals is a big component of it. That's actually what really attracts the seniors to the centers. And then while they're there, then they engage in recreational activities and dances and Zumba and such.
Thank you for that clarification. I don't want to get off track. We started with CAPMC, and the question from Councilman Montes was about CAPMC, and Maddie Mendez has been waiting. I think she wants to speak as well. Maddie, are you still with us? Hello, Maddie, are you there?
Now I'm unmuted. Can you hear me? This is Maddie. So the application, the summary sheet shows that it is twenty thousand. The application was for ten thousand dollars for rental assistance. At the time when the CDBG information was released, we didn't know about the CDBG care that came like shortly after. So we submitted an application to help assist our community with prevention of homelessness, to assist with rental assistance. We all know that there... We all know that there are a lot of families that are unemployed or self-employed and unemployed right now due to COVID-19. Cause they weren't able to open their businesses. So we applied for $10,000. Um, you know, we will look for other areas within our, our funding. We listed, we wanted to be transparent in our application. And we did share other funding that we were expecting to receive. Um, I am fine with um this money going to the senior nutrition program. Because that is so important to our community. We have to support our seniors. And um, I will find, look for the 10,000 in other locations because these other agencies are worthy agencies and. I'm okay. We have the point, we have the CAP MC administration and I just want to say thank you, council for your support.
Thank you for your comments, Ms. Mendez. Thank you very much. And I think that clarified a, a couple of things. We can go back if there's some very brief last-minute comments about the uh, the Senior Nutrition and Rec Program. Was there any other comments on that?
Mr. Scarborough, that would be you.
Mr. Mayor, I had a question.
Yeah, Councilman Holly.
Since she, we, since they pulled that agenda off, can I still come back on and vote?
Uh. Oh, you recused yourself because of CAP MC. It's not, it's technically, it has not been removed.
Okay.
So it would be a no.
Thank you.
Then, and the next time, Mr. Councilman, you have a question, I would suggest that you uh, you uh chat or message me instead.
Mayor, I have, I have a question for John.
Uh, yes, Ms. Becker.
Hi, um, my mistake on that uh. Confusion. Have some of the parks programs been discontinued due to COVID and wasn't there a savings amount in that?
As far as the CEBG funding goes?
For this, for the funding, the request of the $100,000. I'm trying to recall. The conversation. How, do we know how much the senior nutrition allocation was for? Was that the whole 100,000?
That was the initial request. And then the, obviously the recommendation from the committee is uh, the 37609.
So that whole 100,000 was for the meals program and not other recreational seniors programs?
So, yeah, it's for a multitude of things.
Yeah, there are um, three distinct funding sources that support the full suite of senior programs, which includes. The meals and as the mayor had said, uh recreational programs, uh senior trips, excursions, that sort of thing.
Right.
And those three sources are the FM AAA, the CDBG, the city's general fund. And to a lesser degree, there uh, the seniors are encouraged to make a donation. It is not required. Um, through the course of the year, um donations generate just a couple of thousand dollars.
Right. My recollection was that there was significant savings because a lot of the congregate activities had been shuttered due to COVID?
No. So um FM AAA pulled back the portion of their funding. Uh, granted, we were entering into the third quarter of the year, so there wasn't a lot left, but they pulled back the remainder. And then took over the um, delivery program where, or the meal program where they actually delivered the meals directly to their home. Um, the, by the time we were moving into the third quarter, the CDBG monies were just about expended. We do currently have staff currently working on the senior program. They um, they're doing year-end closeout. Um, they check in weekly with all of our 150 seniors to make sure that they're. Healthy and getting what they need and doing essentially uh welfare checks. So um, we've dropped, drew down about $30,000 of that money. I think there's about $9,000 left. That we expect to be expended by the end of the fiscal year.
Okay, so we don't know what the nutrition program costs?
He, uh, yeah, well. You mean separated out from the recreational activities?
Right.
No.
So there's no way to know.
Information.
Okay.
Let's, let's move on. Uh, Mr. Chavez from the Rescue Mission has been patiently waiting. Uh, Mr. Chavez, are you with us?
Uh, yes, I am.
Hi, welcome.
Hello, thank you, Mayor and Council. Uh, I'm just here to present the Rescue Mission to you and. Uh, as you know, we've been here for quite a while. Actually, we've been here for 33 years. And uh. Uh, recently with the sheltered in place, we've been able to actually minister to the uh, the homeless population that have. That have been staying here. And we got to know them and we actually helped them uh get referred to other agencies so they can not be homeless. So. Uh, that's been a good thing out of this. Uh, we also have uh men going through our uh rehabilitation program that uh, actually we got. One person that is working, so. Um, a lot of this sheltered in place has actually uh. Uh, benefited a, a lot of the people that we serve, so. Um. As you know, we give food boxes away and, and we uh, just minister to the homeless. I mean. We're the only uh shelter here in, in Madera. And uh, we love what we do and, and we get to know the people that are out on the streets and live at the rivers and. Really trying to help them uh, get their feet on the ground and, and in the right direction, so. Um, yeah, we've submitted this uh 30,000s to continue to help us meet those needs of the homeless here in Madera.
Thank you, Mr. Chavez. If there's any silver lining to this, this pandemic, it's the fact that the Madera County Rescue Mission uh has been able to help so many people. Uh, the homeless people, the people uh dealing with addictions and afflictions and so forth. So thank you very much for what the Madera County Rescue does.
Yeah, it's also women. We also have women here.
Women, yes. Thank you, sir. Thank you for uh, for reminding me of that.
Yeah.
Okay, if there's no further questions or comments, I'd like to move on now to the Public Services table. Uh, we have what's requested. In yellow is the Block Grant Commission's recommendations. Um, and then there's just a total there of 136,759. So I will ask Councilman Robinson. Uh, for his comments going down the list uh that we just discussed.
Okay, um, how much did um Park and Rec um receive last year? John?
I can speak to that. Um, the initial allocation was 30,000. Um, I think it was about six weeks into, or after the initial allocation, there was an additional 9,000 that was allocated. So the, the total take was 39,000 and change.
Last year?
Yes, sir.
And why, why they uh request 100,000 there?
Last year, we requested about the same amount of money. So um. As I'd said, there are three funding sources, one of which is the general fund. As the um. The grant allocations go down, in order for us to fully fund the program, then the general fund contribution goes up. Um, what we have historically applied for is around $100,000. Um, I think last year it was about 90 was the original application and this year we asked for 100.
So you asked for 100?
Yeah. If you look back over the years, historically, that's been uh, about the ask.
Oh, but, but you gotta make it up for it, right? There's no uh.
I'm sorry.
There's, there's no uh, we say uh impediment to uh the services.
As far as the re, the reduced allocation to 37?
Yeah.
Well, as long as we can, so the general fund provides gap funding, it has historically anyway. And as long as we can continue to do that, then we, we can run the program as it's um, as it exists currently. If we get to a point to where the general fund can no longer support the gap. Then we, then we need to start looking at either reducing or eliminating the program.
Okay.
So your recommendations, Mr. Councilman.
Well, my recommendation is uh, uh, just the block grant commission, what they uh approve. I'll go along with what they said.
Thank you for that.
You're welcome.
I will ask Councilwoman Gallegos for her input.
Um, I approve what the block grant. Putting.
Thank you very much. Uh, Mayor Protem Garcia has recused himself. Uh, so I will ask uh Councilman Rodriguez for his, his input.
Uh, Mayor Madon, I too agree with the uh, uh Block Grant Commission. Surprisingly, it seems like this is the first time that we have done no changes yet. So yeah, it's good.
I haven't spoken yet, Mr. Councilman. Councilman Montes.
I was gonna say, we're not done yet. Um, no, I, I agree with the commission's recommendations.
And Councilman Holly has recused himself, so he will not be participating in this one. And I too agree with the Block Grant Commission's recommendations. I, I do want to thank all of our applicants again, uh, one for, for being here, two, your patience, and then for all the wonderful, fantastic things you're doing. Uh, in, in our community. Um, it's, it's, it's just so wonderful to see the difference that we're making. With, with this money, which is exactly what it was intended for. This is almost a million dollars to be dispersed in our community. Um, and it's not easy. Um, we, we wish that all applicants can, can receive everything they're asking for. But again, uh, thanks to the Block Grant Commission and our council and staff. Uh, and everybody who's doing their best to make a difference in Madera. So thank you to all the applicants. It seems as though it's unanimous across the board with the, the five council members agreeing across the board with the Block Grant Commission's recommendations on this one. All right, are we good with that, Yvette?
Yes.
Fantastic.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I believe there was a um, a gal from Big Brothers and Big Sisters that put a. Put a tag out in front of the screen. I think she wanted to make a comment. I'm not sure if it's. Appropriate at this time or not.
Ms. Pecanacam, did you have uh something to add or something to say? It's always good to see you.
Thank you very much. Oh, you guys have a very hard job. And on behalf of the children and my board, thank you so much. I do want to let everybody know that things have changed with the pandemic. I do want to disclose that. Um, the kids are not going to be able to meet in person as much as we like, to be mindful of the rules and regulations. So we are going to do Zoom meeting. We've been doing that with the funding that you gave us. Before, we would meet with them at the park or at a, a location. So now we're meeting with the, the kids. We're sending them the curriculum. We're sending it to all the kids and they're doing it together. So they're doing a lot of hands-on learning. So I do want to let the um, the, everybody know that, that's why we're going with this. We want to serve as many kids as possible. Our goal was 100 youth, but now we're working closely with the principals and, and the superintendent. So we're going to try to serve more kids. We're going to do whatever we can, cause Zoom, there's more availability. So thank you so much for everything that you're doing. I hope you guys could join us. I don't know if I could share these great news with you guys. It's been really hard. So we're trying to do the best that we can to really give the family resources and services. It's been heartbreaking. As you know, adults, we're facing through a lot of hardship, a lot of unknown, a lot of job loss, a lot of uncertainty. Can you imagine the children? So we're focusing heavily on their mental health, their behavior and social emotional. We're closely working with um, Madera Department, Social Services, and the Food Bank, whatever we can to help each other. So I just wanted to say that because I am so honored and proud to be a part of Madera and you guys are doing amazing things and. I don't know how you do it. It was hard to allocate all these funds because everybody's so great. Everybody's doing a great job. So thank you. Thank you for this.
Thank you so much, Dan. We appreciate it. A lot of teamwork here in the city of Madera. And just to let everybody know, uh, our Chief Lawson is still a big, is that, is that correct, with Big Brothers, Big Sisters? Fantastic program. Congratulations and good luck. We look forward to hearing from you again soon. Let's move on to the, uh, well, first, let's, let's welcome back uh Mayor Protem Garcia and Councilman Holly. Is Mayor Protem with us? There he is.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Welcome back, uh, Mayor Protem and Councilman. Uh, we'll move on to uh, the capital, capital. Capital projects. Um, this is the, the tentative capital projects and public improvement allocations.
Very good. Um, well, Mr. Mayor, these are um, the remaining seven applications. There were a total of 17 applications submitted under this year's annual action plan. And the last seven were for capital projects. Um, since you have utilized the maximum amounts under administration and public service, you all, you, there is a remainder of. $592,621. Um, you have. The seven applications totaling 1,105,866. So definitely exceeding the 592,000. The Block Grant Commission, um, during their meeting, which took place on June 2nd, 2020. Are proposing the following as highlighted in yellow on this spreadsheet. And um, you can see that they are proposing to fund six out of the seven applicants. Totalling the 592,000. Um, if. The Block Grant Commission wants to make some comments at this point, I would recommend that we turn it over to the Block Grant Commission.
You, Yvette. I'll ask Mr. Hutchings or anyone from the BGC if they wish to make any comments. On these allocations.
Mr. Hutchings, you're on mute.
On mute. Okay. Yeah, um. Amongst the commission, I don't think there was really that much enthusiasm and uh support for the. Uh, D and South project, which would uh mostly consist of the installation of a uh, traffic signal, traffic control signal, which are. Uh, expensive projects these days. So when you take out that 450,000. Out of the question there, it gets it much closer to the uh Block Grant figure. And we did feel that most of these other projects were worthy projects. And thus we recommended full funding for them, for the Habitat, for Humanity, for the McNelly Park Program. The Lillian Vineyard Street was uh, funding to augment a project that was approved the previous cycle for CDBG. And then uh, the flashing stop signs and also the work for the engineering department. I, I was told, or we were told that I guess some city uh departments are going to be moving to the former RDA building there. So we thought that that would be an important project to make sure that it was ADA accessible.
Before we go further, I apologize and I let one get by. The last allocation, the Public Services, uh, I should have called for action. Uh, so I'm going to quickly ask um, if Councilman Holly and Mayor Protem Garcia will just briefly uh mute and stop video. And when they do, I'm gonna uh, bring it back to council for action on the last proposal of the Public Services. My apologies.
Mr. Mayor, did you want this uh motion to reflect all the allocations that were granted or is there a one motion that can?
No, I, I would suggest that we would have just agreed with the Block Grant Commission's recommendations and those numbers are stated. I think that would be fair enough.
In that case, Mr. Mayor, I move to approve that uh, we uh, go with the Block Grant Commission on the Public Service uh portion of this meeting.
It's been moved by Councilman Rodriguez and I believe segmented by Councilman Montes to um. Agree with the Block Grant Commission's recommendations for the Public Services allocations. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries five to zero with Mayor Protem Garcia and Councilman Holly um abstaining. Thank you. And once again, my apologies. We can bring them back, please, Councilman Holly and Mayor Protem. Okay, thank you all very much again. My apologies for that. Let's. My apologies for that. Let's move forward. Mr. Hutchings, was that, was that the extent of your comments?
Yes, it is. I'll be happy to answer any questions that council might have.
Thank you. I do not see any requests so far from the attendees or anybody wishing to speak regarding these applications. I'll ask if council has any questions regarding the applications. Seeing none, that will make it easy. And so why don't we start with Councilman Robinson as we move forward.
Go with the Block Grant Commissioner with their suggestion.
Councilwoman Gallegos.
I agree with the Block Grant Commissioners on their proposals.
Mayor Protem Garcia.
I agree. Good job, people.
And Councilman Rodriguez.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I too agree with the Block Grant Commission's allocation front.
Councilman Montes.
Keep on facing. I agree.
And Councilman Holly.
Mr. Mayor, I also agree with the BGC Commission report.
Thank you very much. I'm gonna agree, but I kind of want, I have a question slash maybe just point of clarification, because I don't want to assume anything, and maybe Mr. Hutchings or someone from the BGC can help out. I can appreciate how you fully funded some of the programs, especially McNally Park and the Habitat for Humanity. What that will do on that side of town, it's just so needed, especially at McNally Park to have that playground equipment. But I do want to also talk about D Street and South. That area too has been a big concern in that particular district. A number of kids walk to school, and there's been talk about traffic signals, a signalization of flashing stop signs and things. So again, I don't want to assume, Ken, but I think what you guys are doing is trying to fund a project to get it off the ground and done versus partially funding something that may linger and take a while to complete. Is that, is that correct? Is that a safe assumption?
I think you're on mute, Mr. John.
Is he on mute? I can't, I can't see him.
I'm sorry.
That's all right.
This one of these days. No, that's, that is true to to a great extent. Like I said, I think that we saw more bang for the buck, I think, in funding all the other projects and getting them funded completely. And I guess I'd have to admit, and this is my own personal opinion, I guess this is the first time that I've seen anything for, you know, for the intersection of D and South. And admittedly, I'm not there before or after school or whatever. I do know that it doesn't always stop, and I'm not sure as to the conditions or whatever on that. So I had a lot of questions about it, and I guess that if there's going to be future applications on this, I guess I'd like to know, like, about the number of students or the number of people who are crossing there and whatever. So I guess I feel that other less intrusive measures should be considered before we go to a full-fledged traffic signal. And I'm just speaking from, you know, from my view as a civil engineer and a traffic engineer.
I appreciate that. Like I said before, there's a, there's a huge need everywhere. I don't believe this is for a traffic signal. I think it says accessibility and safety improvements. Mr. Helmut, it looks like you may have something to add. Is that, is that also a safe assumption?
Well, at D and South, we are actually showing a traffic signal, but I, but, but I, we agree with the allocation of funds that are proposed. Because we did want to go ahead and update everybody on, on something. Following our application of the traffic signal for funding with use of CDBG funds, the MCTC alerted us that there might be, or probably will be additional funds from the CMAC awards.
Great.
We believe that the signal will be fully funded. It's not a certainty, but we believe that it will be.
Fantastic. Thank you very much for that. If there's no further comments, I'll, I will bring it to council for action on the capital projects and public improvement.
I so moved to approve the capital projects and public improvements as presented.
Second.
It's been moved by Councilwoman Gallegos and seconded by, I think that's Councilman Rodriguez.
Third.
Heard by Councilman Holly to approve the capital projects portion and public improvement allocations with the recommendations of the Block Grant Commission. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries unanimously. Thank you all very, very much for that. So again, Yvette, I know there's a 30-day public comment portion. I'm not sure where you are at this portion of the agenda, if you want to recap that or what's next for us before we move forward.
Yes, per HUD regulations, the public the public comment period is required of 30 days. So our public comment period begins tomorrow. We will allow the 30 days to take place, and then we will come back to council to share any received public comments and well as to request a final approval of the allocations. Once you approve the final allocations, we will send over the consolidated plan as well as the first-year action plan to HUD before the required due date for approval. Once we have that approved by HUD, we can begin to distribute the funds to the organizations.
Thank you very much for that. Any final comments from council? Seeing none, we will move on to item A2. This is a public hearing on the community developed block grant COVID-19 funding allocation, which is in the total amount of $536,338. So.
Okay, I'll start that public hearing right now. As we just previously said, we did have a second public hearing for the COVID money that was awarded to the city of Madera. The objective of this public hearing is, again, for the council to receive input from the public and Block Grant Commission on how to utilize the $536,000 that was allocated, and for the council to make, again, tentative determinations for allocations. Just for the process, we did receive this funding notification back in the middle of April. We had a public comment session as a part of the city council meeting as of May 6. We sent a request out for applications for the period of May 12 through the 26th. And also to wrap that up, as well as the applications that we did with the annual action plan, BGC met to wrap up these applications on June 2. I'm in preparation for this COVID. Money needs to be allocated, you know, like we stated before, the council met in May as well as, I'm sorry, April, May, and June as of today. And to consider funding recommendations, recommendations as we just had with the annual action plan. One of the stipulations for the COVID money is that they reduce the 30-day review period to a five-day comment and review period that will be starting tomorrow. Back on May 6, it was discussed during a public comments session that rent, mortgage assistance, food assistance, utility billing, and small business assistance were the high priorities that was identified by the public as well as the city council. One caveat, too, that helped with, with the COVID allocation is that the directives for this money is was that there was no cap on the public services that could be allocated with this award, which is normally held to the 15%, which is a challenge sometimes because the need is so great. On this slide, this just explains the, for administration, there's only one applicant, and that was the city, the grants department. We did have an opportunity to request the 20% again, but we only requested $50,000 because we felt the need was great, and we felt we could function and get through the COVID. I know there's separate reporting requirements that'll have to be tracking within the grants department and submitting to HUD. But we felt that the need was great, and we felt $50,000 is a reasonable sum for us to do our efforts for this one-time grant funding stream. There is no cap, again, like for the public service and capital projects, there's still no cap. There was mostly just public services identified as part of the public comment. So when the applications were released for submission by the local agencies, eight were returned, and the requested amount was $957,000. We could start, I guess, on this part of the vote if council so chooses to take a vote on what, there's only one grant request for administration for the COVID money. If you so choose, one other part of this also is the $57,000 that was not requested by the city does roll down into the public services portion of the allocation. So if the city council so chooses right now to take a vote, if they agree with what we requested and a block grant commission tentatively approved, we can move on to the public services portion of the grant funding.
I think that would be appropriate, Mr. Dibis. If there's no further questions or comments from the public or council, I say we I call for action on this portion of it.
So move to approve allocation?
Second.
Been moved by Councilman Holly and seconded by Councilman Robinson to approve their requested grant amount of $50,000 to the local admin. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries unanimously. Great. So that additional money is will now be moved over, Mr. Dibis, and you can continue.
So as you can see on the next slide, as John was referring to regarding the extra meal for the seniors, they requested $63,600, and as you can see, the BGC recommendation was not to fund that program. Also, there's a city mask program. There was a identified need and low, low amount in areas, believing that, you know, obviously with the COVID situation and the masking situation that's going on and the preventative measures that they actually do provide an excellent source of preventing the coronavirus from spreading. And there was a request there from the city for the $25,000, but the Block Grant Commission recommended not to fund that.
Mr. Dibis, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. Again, no, my apologies. I hate to interrupt, but before you go down the list, Mayor Protem, Mayor Protem Garcia has a question.
No, actually, sir, I will be recusing myself from this portion of the, of the presentation and the vote because of the same conflict that I had earlier. So I will recuse myself.
Thank you, Mr. Councilman.
I will also too, Mr. Mayor.
Because of CAPMC, Mr. Councilman?
Yes, sir.
Councilman Holly will recuse himself as a member of CAPMC, and Mayor Protem Garcia will recuse himself with his family's affiliation with the Coalition for Community Justice. Thank you both very much. If you will mute and stop video, I'd appreciate it. And Mr. Dibis, again, my apologies for interrupting. Please continue.
No, that's fine, Mr. Mayor. In regards to Madera Rescue Mission, I know they were asking for additional funding due to the increased need based on the COVID situation going on in the city of Madera. Block Grant Commission realized that they had allocated the $30,000 as part of the annual action plan, so they, their tentative allocation was to not fund that. Small business, that was highly identified as part of a need in the community. Got quite a few calls actually from people calling me directly, and I had, was explaining to them as part of the process that this is not a direct fund program or grant program directly to the businesses. It's done through a third party. So there, I know, waiting to hear the outcome, I believe, of tonight's meeting. The Madera County EDC requested $208,000 for their small business assistance grant funding program. The BGC recommended $156,000. And the utility billing and assistance for water and trash for CAPMC, the $50,000 Block Grant Commission analyzed this as well pretty thoroughly and decided that this wasn't a one-two fund, but they did know that the rental assistance was very key as well as others, obviously, other needs in the, in the community. So they, that was the decision to fully fund that particular request. Working with the Downtown Association, they submitted a grant request for the needs of the downtown specific avenue or corridor, and the Block Grant Commission believes the $55,000 was a fair request, and they tentatively suggested to fund that fully. Due to the, we only had $486,000 left as, after all the allocations were presented by the Block Grant Commission and the community for justice had an excellent application requesting the $434,000. But they, the Block Grant Commission felt like to, to be able to spread money out to many needed organizations to provide the spread of the need, the remainder was allocated to them for the $185,000. And there may be, I believe, somebody who might want to speak from one of those organizations possibly.
Thank you, Mr. Dibis. I will ask, I think you spoke very well regarding the direction that the Block Grant Commission gave. I'll ask Mr. Hutchings if there's something he wants to add regarding the recommendations versus the requested amounts.
Nothing to add. I noted a moment ago that Ms. Becker was apparently wanting to comment, so I will let her make her comment.
Sure, sure. My apologies.
These were really tough decisions, but in the end, we decided to prioritize housing and job support. Because there are other programs that duplicate the utility assistance, and if you don't have a house and a job, the rest of it is secondary. So, and these folks had really good plans for housing preservation, rental assistance, and preventing folks from being further displaced. So this, I wish we could have funded them all fully, but it just wasn't possible.
That being said, Ms. Becker, with a CAPMC utility billing assistance, the BGC feels that, that assistance is, is pretty much the same as what the coalition was offering as well?
Well, they also had the eviction prevention program that was very, very thorough and well thought out. And I think the utility, the utilities shut-off program was secondary to the preservation of the housing stock.
Got it. I have a couple of people, applicants who wish to speak, but I will ask any of my colleagues first if they have any questions of the commission or Mr. Dibis. Councilman Montes.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So I just kind of wanted to touch back on, on the mask program, and I agree with what the commission is saying. These are all, it's very hard to figure out which one you want to allocate. You want to allocate the maximum amount to all of them. But in light of the governor's order that came out today, would that have changed anybody's opinion of funding the mask program?
No, there's literally masks on every street corner and every bodega. Homemade and.
Understanding is, the Health Department too has received extra supplies.
Yeah.
So hopefully masks are among them too.
That was my question. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Councilman. I'm, I'm going to call upon Sue Kern. She would like to speak for the Coalition for Community Justice, and I believe Maddie Mendez, after that, of course, will speak for CAPMC. Sue, are you with us?
Yeah, I am. Thank you very much. Just for clarification, also, this, this, our grant application is not talking about the utility shut-off because we already get funded both through PG&E grant and also one from the PUC to work on helping people with utility issues. The PG&E one provides actual assistance to pay for bills, and the PUC one allows us to help challenge bills if we think they're not correct. But what we're focusing on here is basically, we're really concerned with many low-income families in this community because they many low income families in this community because they lost their jobs or unable to work because of lack of childcare or illness that they could very easily lose their housing. And, and the city council passed the three month moratorium that allowed people to get a break on having to pay the rent for the three months. But many people are not able to save up money to pay it when it becomes due. That money, the rent doesn't go away. It, it's still due. And the average rent is about $900 for a family in this community. So in order to keep people from being evicted, we're going to have to be able to do an analysis of what it's going to actually take to keep them in their home. And that involves both helping to, to pay the gap rent because they're not going to necessarily be able to do that in, in June or July when it becomes due. The only thing that's keeping the evictions from happening now besides the moratorium program is the fact that the court is not accepting eviction cases. They're not issuing summonses for evictions, but when that opens up again, we're afraid that a lot of people are going to lose their homes. So what we're doing besides actually providing, we, we figured out that it would take probably about 4,000, between 3 and 4,000 if a family has no funds to pay the back rent to keep them in their home. If they're going to be evicted anyway, another option would be to work with them on finding an alternative home and pay the first month's rent for that and, and help them move. But, you know, the thing that we're, we're talking about in part of our program is not just the actual cash grant to people, but providing counseling to people on what they're eligible for in terms of other programs. They may be able to apply for the federal unemployment program that they might not be aware of. And the, the instructions coming out of the state and federal government have been very confusing about how those things work. And a lot of the people that we serve are not English speaking primary speakers. So it's very difficult for them to navigate the different optional programs that are available. So not only are we going to be prioritizing who are the people most in need are who, who need the assistance to stay in their home and not be evicted. Because if a family becomes homeless, that, that is not only bad for the family, but it's also bad for the community, especially during the COVID situation.
Thank you, Sue.
But we're going to be providing counseling on what the other options are for the other cash money that they might be eligible for to help, help them stay in their home. So it's not just handing out checks. It's also working with the families on what their various options are.
Thank you, Sue. I appreciate those comments. I want to be fair to everybody else. We have Maddie Mendez on the line wishing to speak and then, of course, from CAPMC and then from the Downtown Association, I believe Chris Miller is with us. Maddie, are you there?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Thank you.
Thank you for the opportunity to speak. I just wanted to share on utility assistance for water and garbage. We are seeing our, our customers for the LIHEAP assistance, the PG&E assistance. And one of the things that they consistently ask for is, are there, is there any assistance for water and garbage? We are behind there. And for water, that's life sustainability, you know, for them to be able to shower, wash dishes, wash their clothes, especially during this time under COVID-19. So whether it be, you know, and I see that the coalition is asking for utility assistance as well. I would just share, let's utilize our, our energy assistance, LIHEAP funding and, and send families to the programs that have that funding. But that the utility assistance be earmarked for water, garbage to assist those families and that fall into those income levels. And whether we get funded for that or not, we, it's just a need. It's, it's a dire need here in our city.
Thank you, Maddie. And to that point, I just want to clarify. Ms. Kern, did you say that, that your application did not, these monies do not provide assistance for utility payments?
I'm sorry. It's not that we, we can't use it for that, but it, we felt that the most important thing was keeping people in their home and, and part of the other programs that we're already operating on do help with, with utility money. So that if, if it became necessary for a particular family, that could be included. But that's not the priority for us and we do have the reach and the, and the other program that we work with through PG&E and through Public Utilities Company that, that's going to deal with that. And, and the, you know, basically what we figured is for the money that we asked for, for the 400 plus thousand dollars, we could probably, for the most needy people, maybe keep them in their home for 3 to 4,000 each. And that would use up most of the money, you know, for cash assistance. And the rest of it is going to have to be for working with them on what they're eligible for in terms of other programs. So everybody coming in our door is going to get some kind of assistance. If it's not cash aid, then it's going to be counseling on what, what they're eligible for in terms of other programs. We also work with the United Way and they've been helped, they've been working with us on giving out funds for, for this kind of program. And we also have a grant from the Sierra Health Foundation for $50,000, which we're using for people outside of the city. You know, the, the funds that we're asking for here are just for within the city of, of Madera.
Great. Sue, thank you. Thank you for that clarification. I'm going to ask one of our attendees wishing to speak. The last three numbers of the phone number are 027. And I'm not sure if that's Mr. Miller or not.
That's, that's Steve Copeland.
Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Copeland. I should have recognized the number.
Ah, no problem.
All right. Thanks for being with us.
Yeah, you bet. And, and I was just advocating for the Madera Downtown Association grant that will be administered through the Chamber of Commerce. There's so many minority businesses and, and businesses in downtown Madera that have really been crippled with this COVID deal. I'm, I'm, I can use my barber as an example. There's beauty shops. There's, there's so many businesses that are trying to crank up and get going. And this grant, the applicants would apply to the Chamber of Commerce and there would be a selection committee for downtown businesses only to help fund hand sanitizers, masks, COVID protective implements that have been mandated to get them back up and running. And so I, I hope the council will consider supporting this measure to, to help the downtown, Madera downtown businesses. So that's all I have to say.
Great, Mr. Copeland. Thank you very much. We appreciate your comments. Any comments from our questions of council regarding the statements by the applicants? Be none. Why don't we go to the screen for recommendations, Yvette? And I, and I, I do have a question.
Certainly.
I, I, and I'm, I'm sorry, Steve, this isn't for you. I, my, my question is regarding CAPMC and the utility billing assistance and the coalition and what they have to offer. In the application and, and we have 800 pages here, so I don't have the application in front of me, but from what I remember, as it says here for CAPMC, it, it would assist in utility billing. Water and the trash. But for the Coalition for Community Justice, you, you say, Ms. Kern, that it can be used for that, but you have other avenues and other funding sources and other grant sources to help with that. So I just, there's an overlap and at the same time, it's.
Okay, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
No, and just to answer your question, the, the proposal covers utilities as well, but, but our priority is going to be keeping people in their homes. Because I think the worst situation would be if you have a family with a bunch of children that are on the street. There's not, there's a 0% vacancy rate in, in Madera at this point.
Right. No, I, 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 I understand that. You, you made it clear and I appreciate that. And, and I know the 434 that you asked for, that every, every picket that can be used, I, I get that completely. What I'm trying to get at is if somebody needed utility assistance, whether they went to CAPMC or to Coalition for Community Justice, they will be assisted. There is this. Can and use for utility assistance. And I say that because the direction of council last month was for food, for housing, so there wouldn't be evictions. So there would not be, we can help with utility payments, water, garbage and the like, and then also for small business. So I just want to be sure that the monies that we disperse, that our residents will be able to go use these dollars for utility assistance. That's what I'm asking.
Yeah. I mean, that's part of, that's, but we have an application process where we're going to be, you know, giving points of priority to the worst situations, the people that are in the most dire need.
Understand.
And if, if utility is part of that, then that certainly can be considered. But, you know, the biggest issue is going to be, are they going to be able to stay in their home? Because if they don't have a home, they don't have utilities.
Got it. Got it. Thank you. I will ask Ms. Mendez for her comments.
Yes, Mayor, Mayor and Council, we, we have LIHEAP and we will submit our energy assist, applications through the LIHEAP funding. We will focus this funding, if we were awarded any funding at all, specifically for water and garbage. We know that that is a need. We've heard our customers say that is a need and that's what we would use the money for.
Thank you.
For the city of Madera.
Thank you. For residents in the city of Madera. Thank you.
For residents in the city of Madera, we would confirm that they are residents of the city of Madera and have city water bills.
Any questions from council? I believe we have, is Lourdes Herrera with us? Is she on Zoom with us? Lourdes, Lourdes, are you with us? There's Barry. Are you there, Lourdes?
I'm here. Can you hear me?
Okay, it's, it's real echoey. I'm not sure if you have multiple devices on or not. We can. Council, can you hear?
Just, just, we can just barely hear you. I think there's an echo in the background there, Lourdes, but we'll make the best of it if you can speak up a little louder.
Okay, only like, I would like to mention, like as Sue say, we can maybe use the most of the money to prevent evictions to the rent. We have a big program for many years helping the community with PG&E bills. Maddie say, this money, maybe if we got it, we use it to complete assistance for the rent. And if the people come in and they need assistance because they have a high bill to work, of course, maybe we can help them.
Thank you, Lourdes. It was very, very difficult to hear you, but I, I think we got the gist. Councilman Rodriguez, did you have a question?
I do, Mr. Mayor. And this is more for Karen in regards to, well, I'm sorry, it's Sue, right? I apologize. This is in regards to, in, in a case where you have a dire situation where families are impacted by COVID come before you and they can't pay either the rent or utility bills. I think I heard you say that the priority would be for helping them not get evicted, correct? I mean, in a situation where they can't pay either the rent or the bills, it is, is, I mean, this, I'm sure we're not going to be confronted with a lot of this here, but you are going to have situations where folks can't pay either because of the impacts of COVID. And I'm not sure if this is one of the considerations that your application had there. And, and also for the C, for the block grant commission and looking at that, if that was something also that, that they considered when awarding this money.
I'm not sure if there was a question in there for me, but.
Well, the, yeah, it wasn't, well, the question for you, Sue, was you, you mentioned you prioritize in helping not get evicted. Is that what it is? I mean, as far as if, if a family comes in because they can't pay their rent and they can't pay their utilities, what's the primary focus on that? Is that keeping them there? I mean, because if, if you have a situation where you can't pay both, what, what's, what's the deal there?
Well, I mean, there's each, each, we're going to work on each case on a case by case basis. We have an application process that outlines all of the things that the family needs and, and all of the factors that would make it a priority in terms of, you know, whether there's elderly people, whether the children, what, what's the situation of the family? And we try, we're going to try and use the funds, spread it out. I mean, obviously, even 400 something thousand is not going to keep everybody in their homes. 185,000 is going to be even less. So we do the best we can with what we've got. We look at each family, we look at their situation. It may be that the best thing for that family is to try and find them alternative housing that's less expensive. Whatever it is, we're going to, we're going to work with them on a plan for that family on what it's going to take to keep them in their home. And if they're in their home, obviously they're going to need utilities. They need lights and refrigeration and everything else. So if, if they're eligible for one of the other programs that we work with, we might help them with advocating about a bill that, that is unreasonable or get PG&E to reduce the bill. Or we might get, you know, direct PG&E assistance for bill. If those are not available and they still have no ability to pay the utilities, then that'll be part of, of what we decide for that family. All I'm saying is that, as you, as the city council has mentioned, all of the, you know, even all of the money, if it went to us, would still not cover the, the need that's in this city. And the other programs that are working, you know, we, we partner with CAPMC, we partner with the Rescue Mission in terms of the food programs, we partner with United Way. We partner with anyone that will work with us to provide whatever services our, our constituents need. So we take, we take the intake application, what are all the issues they're facing? And the priority for this money would be to keep people housed and, and off the street. That's, that's, you know.
And I certainly agree because I don't think that the amount of money allocated for the city of Madera is even remotely close to the need that there is. So.
Absolutely not.
And I think our block grant commission certainly took that into account. I think just to clarify to what the mayor's point was, that in a case where a family comes in, in this case, not necessarily energy, but garbage or water, as alluded to earlier, would be something that you would cover if, if you looked at the whole picture where, you know, the, the tenant needed assistance in, in utilities, right? Because with the other programs that you work with, you would be able to help them or aid them in, 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 in covering for some of that, uh, other utilities or, or energy, correct?
Sure. Or, I'm sorry, or applying for additional funds, you know, for, from unemployment or something that might help them pay for the utilities. Those, you know, all of the programs.
I get that. And your primary focus is again, keeping people in their homes.
Right. And we also, we also work closely with CRLA because we used to be housed with them. And, and many of the issues that we, we are going to deal with is negotiating with these different agencies and with the, with the landlords to try and keep them in as long as possible or work out a payment plan. That's another option. If they can have a longer term payment plan, they might be able to stay in the home and just pay the current rent and a little bit more until they're paid off. So we, we take a wraparound approach to each family that comes in the door. Whatever, whatever services we have available through our other programs, they're obviously eligible for that as well. But this particular fund is prioritizing keeping them in their homes.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you, Sue. Any further questions, Mr. Councilman?
No, I think that, that, that'll clarify that, Mr. Mayor. And again, just, I, I think our, our block grant commission certainly took that into account. And I think that's why they allocated the, the funds where they're at now. So thank you.
I agree. Before we move on, I have a, a quick question. The block grant commission's allocation does not include that additional 57,000 from admin. Is that correct?
That is correct. So the remaining funds are.
We have an additional, we have an additional 57,268 that is not assigned to anybody here, correct?
No, Mr. Mayor, actually, it, it has been moved down into this section. The 486,000 was in anticipation of the council accepting the tentative allocation that block grant commission made. So that money's, the 50,000 plus the 46,338 comes to the 536,338 total allocation.
So you, you, you assumed the 57,000 would be a remainder from council's action and, and moved it into the.
Correct.
To the.
If that had changed, we would have, we would have. If that had changed, we would have, we would have changed this spreadsheet. And if we were going to be fully funded for the 107,000, we would have retracted back that amount from the 486,000.
It would be my recommendation in the future not to assume and leave that up to Council.
Thank you.
So so go back to that last slide. That that last slide shows the four at the, okay, so the Block Grant Commission knew that it had additional 57,000 in change funding, and that's 486,338.
Correct.
Okay.
May I make a comment? I think the reason we assumed that you would go along with that is there was no request for any funds. The only request for the funds was with for the 50,000 of the 107.
I I understand that completely.
Okay.
I just, I just didn't think that was a safe assumption without getting council approval first. Councilwoman Gallegos has a question.
Yeah, my question is that, um, I agree that we do need to keep our families in their homes, and it's really important. And I see that our um, our grant committee did fund that. But a lot of that funding for for keeping families from home, there's assistance for that. We just have a lot of gaps in our families um, because of the COVID-19 with their water and trash and the sewer bills that comes from the city of Madera. And I think that's where we really need to focus, where some of this money needs to go, because one month behind and two months behind, they can never, it it can never be caught up. It's hard for them for the amount of money that the income that they're getting. So um, I understand why our commissioners put that in that area, but for me, I I did a little research, and there is a lot of programs out there to help them with um, evictions and and rental, but not, there is not very many programs out there for water and trash bills that come from the city of Madera. So um, that was my question about how come um, CAPMC utility billing assistance and trash got zero from our committee. I don't know if Ken can elaborate on that?
I um, I do not recall. I'm hoping, Candy, do you recall?
I think what we assumed, and maybe that was incorrect, but we assumed from what we were given that those things were included in the um, in the other uh, requests. Um, because in order to stay in a house, you have to have water. So if, you know, if if you're helping pay the rent, there's no point in paying the rent if you don't have water.
Right.
Mr. Mayor, if I may?
Yes, Ms. Becker.
Um, I believe that this was also being duplicated by other agencies. I believe the city has suspended water shut offs, as has PG&E, deferred shut offs for lack of payment during the COVID crisis. So we felt the best use was to keep people in the job, with the job assistance and in the homes, because there were duplicate programs available for utility assistance. And the city of Madera has recently allocated $100,000, I believe, for forgiveness or uncollectible utilities. So we felt it was duplicative. And we had, we had some hard choices to make. If you don't, if you don't have a house, the utilities are secondary.
Yeah.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Becker, for that clarification. Councilman Rodriguez?
Yeah, and I would certainly agree. I mean, utilities are secondary. I think your most important bill throughout the month or obligation is going to be your housing payment. And without that, I don't see that uh, you know, forgive me if I say this, but water or or trash would come in secondary. I think uh, as DJ had mentioned, that that there is other programs. But certainly the most important thing, and I think when the council took that um, moratorium for the evictions, I think that's going to have some ripple effects here in the next couple of months, because people that haven't paid, again, like uh, someone mentioned earlier, these are just deferred payments. But uh, moving forward, once the payments are due and their class is over, then people have to pay, and the first thing you have to consider is is housing. So um, I I am in agreement with the Block Grant Commission's uh, allocations. And if there's any other programs that uh, can certainly alleviate that, you know, we're scarce for funding. And and I think that was mentioned earlier is that, you know, this funding alone is not going to take care of the situation, but a minor Band-Aid just to alleviate some of the issues that we're facing with the COVID. So I think housing is a priority at this point.
Thank you, Mr. Councilman. Uh, to be fair, Ms. Ms. Herrera has um, uh, sent in her her comments, and to be fair, I wanted, I wanted to just read this from Lourdes Herrera um, in the Madera Community uh, for the Mayor Coalition for Community Justice, excuse me. She says, let me try to explain to you, the priority is to pay the rent. MCCJ has a program helping and referring people to other agencies to get help. And of course, we can help if they need any assist, any assistances. It depends on the situation of each family. We have a program called TRAM and changes. We can help the community refer to other agencies to get help or to get extensions on payments. And I, she says, I'm sorry, it's not TRAM, it's TEAM. That's from Ms. Herrera. And then also Mr. Chavez from the Rescue Mission also wrote in, Madera Rescue Mission has been dealing with COVID-19 since March, as everybody else. So we've been using some of our reserves for utilities and supplies. Please reconsider some funds to offset an already uh, costs that we've incurred. Thank you. Are there any other comments or are anyone wishing to speak or any comments from Council?
Uh, Andy, I'd like to speak a little bit as far as the business community is concerned.
Of course.
Uh, just as a small business owner, born and raised here and and seeing how uh, business has suffered, uh, there's a lot of small businesses in the downtown that uh, maybe weren't aware of the PPP program with the paycheck protection. And a lot of them, uh, I don't think even knew how to even approach to get help. I know there's a great need with homes, but in the business world, uh, it's a, it's a real struggle. I'm fortunate that I'm a second generation business owner. I'm, I'm going to be fine. But there's a lot of new businesses and small businesses, like Steve Copeland had mentioned. And uh, you know, they're, they're struggling too. If they don't, if we lose our business, then we lose our tax bases. And I feel the economy is is dangling in the wind here a little bit. And if we don't save our businesses, we'll all be unemployed and we'll all be trying to figure out what to do. So it's just a small piece, but it's a stopgap for those that didn't or weren't sure how to get help uh, for their businesses. So I just don't want that to be lost in the discussion of housing as well. There's a lot of programs for housing and assistance with the poor, but a lot of people don't think about the businesses. Those are, those are the heartbeat of the economy. So I just want to uh, bring that to attention as well.
Thank you, Chris. I appreciate this. I appreciate your comments. And Council was fully aware, as we discussed, uh, some of the the uh, needs in the community, rental assistance, protection with evictions, utilities. Um, Council also agreed that uh, the the small business uh, was very, very important to keep those jobs and and that gap, that that two month or maybe three month gap for, you know, either keeping them employed or paying the rent and utilities as well for those small businesses. Uh, hence uh, the the Downtown Association with their ask, and it looks like Block Grant Commission uh, took that into consideration, uh, as well as the EDC and helping out small businesses. So thank you for your comments. I appreciate that. And I think now what we should probably do is uh, move on to each council member's uh, recommendations as it pertains to public services. So I'll ask Councilman Robinson about his recommendations for public services. Are you with us, Mr. Councilman?
Yes, um, I recommend uh, what the Block Grant Commission recommends.
Thank you. Councilwoman Gallegos?
Some numbers, if you could come back to me, please.
Pro Tem Garcia is not uh, with us. He recused himself. Uh, so Councilman Rodriguez?
Yes, I will also go with the uh, Block Grant Commission's uh, allocations.
Thank you. Councilman Montes?
I'll go with uh, I'll just go down the line. Um, so zero, zero, zero for the first three. Uh, 151 for the EDC. Let me see, uh, 20 for utility billing assistance. Uh, 85 for CAPMC. 50 for Downtown Association. And then 18338 for Coalition.
Mr. Mayor?
Spreading the love, Mr. Councilman.
Trying to.
Councilman Holly?
Mr. Montes cannot vote for the CAPMC. He has to excuse himself.
Mr. Montes voted on the the last round?
I know.
I'm sorry?
He's a board member of CAPMC as well.
Right, but our attorney said, they're comfortable with it.
Well, how? It's a non-compensated position, and I did disclose it. And that was the direction that I was given.
Well, I did too, but I had to excuse myself from Big Brothers, Big Sisters and CAPMC.
Sir Holly, actually, you voted on the first uh, CAPMC. But if that, if that makes Council comfortable, I'll recuse myself.
I mean, that's what tell me. I I'm just going by what I'm.
Yeah. You've already, you've already disclosed, Mr. Councilman, and you already voted on the last round. Councilman Holly, I'll, I'll take your, oh, I'm sorry, Councilman Holly also recused himself. So I'll go back to Councilwoman Gallegos.
Um, I wish I could see the screen bigger. It's because I'm probably not young, like Montes. Um, any bet, does Montes amount add up to the 486,338?
It does.
Okay. My numbers are pretty close to that. Instead of just retyping different, I'll stick to that. I'll go with Montes's numbers.
For the record, uh, Councilwoman Gallegos, may I ask who Montes is?
Oh. Better see with the one I open.
I'm sorry. I I know it's my turn, and I'm, I'm also putting a few numbers together.
No pressure.
Yeah, none at all. I'm, I am going to go with the the recommendation of the Block Grant Commission. The same numbers. And so we have three, three council members uh, that agree with the Block Grant Commission and two council members that uh, had a some changes to the recommendations, which I can certainly appreciate trying to do so. So with that, if there's no, if there's no further discussion, amendments or changes, I'll ask one last time for any comments from Council before we move forward on the public service allocations.
Mr. Mayor, at this point, I'd like to make a motion to approve the uh, public service as presented by the Block Grant Commission.
Taken.
It's been moved by Councilman Rodriguez and seconded by Councilman Robinson to agree with the Block Grant Commission's recommendations as it pertains to public services, the CDBG funding for COVID-19. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? That motion carries uh, five zero with Mayor Pro Tem Garcia and Councilman Holly abstaining.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to add a comment.
Of course, Ms. Becker.
Um, these were really difficult decisions, and we probably should acknowledge how much we appreciate city administration presenting back that $57,000. They, that was very generous of them because they've worked very hard on all of these things, and I know they've spent a lot of time. So David, Yvette, kudos.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Absolutely. Thank you for pointing that out. And and again, for all applicants and for everybody involved, this is, this is, I I wish there was a lot more money. Um, on one hand, 536,000, $536,000 does not go a long way. Uh, on the other hand, this money is going to really uh, help our community, our small businesses, uh, the great things that the Coalition uh, does for us and 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 so on. So thank you all very much for your patience, uh, for your willingness to put in the application and be an understanding and working with the city of Madera. Thank you very, very much. Any final thoughts or comments?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
One more co-comment. In our February 18th letter from HUD, there was some mention of Section 8 loans in the amount of 4.5 million dollars that we may be able to uh, access or leverage. Low interest, long-term financing to invest in opportunity zones and target areas in our jurisdiction. And they're from the Housing Trust Fund, so I'm hopeful that we could look into that at some point in the future.
Absolutely. Absolutely. I know uh, Bobby Khan, our Executive Director with the EDC, is very familiar with opportunity zones and uh, working together with him and our city manager, we will definitely uh, look into that. Thank you for bringing it up. Any other final comments? That is, that was the last one, right? We don't have any more money to give away?
No, that was, that was it, Mayor.
Okay, so so uh, final thoughts from Mr. Dibis or Ms. Edith about moving forward with COVID?
Well, we have a five-day public review and comment period starting tomorrow. Uh, so we have to uh, pay attention to that and report any of that to HUD as well, as with the Annual Action Plan for the 30-day comment period. Uh, so anybody who has any, any interested parties who still want to make a comment in regards to the tentative decisions for tonight can be addressed during this five-day period. And the public review and comment period expires uh, on June 25th at 5:00 PM.
And I just want to thank all of the applicants, as well as the Block Grant Commission. It's a lot of work to apply for this funding. Um, we do ask for a lot in the application. We ask a lot in the reporting. And we ask a lot of the Block Grant Commission. So thank you very much um, for all of the time that you have put into reviewing the applicants. I know that they did work during the weekend, late evenings, and um, I was very impressed with the work that they did and how thorough they were in evaluating the applicants. Not only that, but they also uh, took it upon themselves to call applicants, do further research, um, look into the work that the organizations do. And um, in 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 their understanding of the needs of the community, I think that they made the best recommendations for council that they could, given the information and the time that they had. So I really appreciate the collaboration. I want to thank David Dibis for being very new to CDBG, but just hitting the ground running, not only doing the action plan this year, but also um, having to work with a consultant to um, get us a five-year consolidated plan going. And not only that, but then we had the COVID allocation as well. So he's been juggling all of that. And I want to thank him um, for just doing a really good job and putting everything together timely. um, for just doing a really good job and putting everything together timely. And, um, we're very excited to move this forward and get it to HUD as soon as we can so that we can start using the funding. And thank you so much for council because I know that you put a lot of time and research into this and, um, listen to the recommendations that block grant commission makes, the factual information that staff provides to you. And you have to, um, keep all of that in mind when you're making these allocations. I thank you for, for the work that you do as well.
Thank you very much for that, Yvette. And I, I have a couple of comments and a question. One, i- it's so very important to get this money out to our community, whether it's with the utility assistance or, or keeping our small businesses alive. Uh, we have this thirty-day comment period before we come back and make it official. When can we expect to have money in hand um, so that we can get it to our small businesses and these people that are really in need? As we all know, I think right now, the need was yesterday. Um, and so I will have a follow-up question to that, that once we know that money's on its way, could this council consider, um, fronting that money, if you will, to get it in the hands of our businesses and residents a whole lot quicker, knowing that the funding is on its way?
Well, that was the suggestion from, uh, our HUD representative, um, to, uh, move this forward in that regard. Um, this is new territory for me, uh, obviously, in with the funding that's happening and, and, uh, the administrative, uh, role that, uh, needs to be done through the COVID and doing this substantial amendment to the, uh, nineteen-twenty annual action plan. So, but, uh, that's something that I'll need to discuss with, uh, with, uh, upper management, obviously, to make sure that we're dotting all our i's and crossing our t's. But, uh, that's something that we will explore starting tomorrow.
Thank you.
To get it into the hands, uh, hopefully, uh, I would think within the next few weeks. Uh, depending, I, I don't want to speak for finance or anything, um, but that, that's just something we're going to pursue and, and try to get to a dancer as soon as we can.
Thank you. Mr. Rodriguez, can you, can you address that as well, please?
Yeah, thanks. Thank you very much, Mayor. Um, we, I'll huddle with our finance department in the next couple of days to see if that's, um, if that's feasible. Um, so my ask of the council and the community is just give us a couple of days to make sure that, that we can do that. Um, I, I, I'm not seeing any major reasons why we can't, but as we all know, you have to dot the i's and cross the t's for legal reasons. And I just wouldn't want to run afoul of any HUD regulations.
Of course.
So that would be my principal concern. Thank you.
Of course. I, I, I share the same concerns. I'm just trying to expedite this as quickly as possible and get the money into the, the hands of, of those that are, that are deserving and really in need. Uh, Mayor Pro Tem Garcia.
Just thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to make sure that we were invited back to the party. Is that okay?
Yes. My apologies.
It's all right. That's, that's fine, brother. I, I know you gotta juggle a lot. Um, so, uh, one fi- uh, one, two final comments. Thank you very much for the group for doing all of the work um, necessary for us to be able to make decisions. Uh, as a former member of the, of the, um, uh, the block grant, uh, commission, I, I too struggled with these things back in the day. Um, I would just ask, uh, Senor Alcalde, that we get some clarification for the future uh, when, um, the block grant, uh, commission is making decisions as to the appropriateness or not of, of making decisions about where the money goes. And so I think once we have that direction, I think we'll be, we'll, we'll be much better for it. So I, I would just ask for that.
Uh, a, a, a point well taken. In the applications, um, the, the, the direction is to actually itemize and show the allocations and exactly where it goes. But uh, in the case, uh, of, of some of the applications, it is a wide range of what's available out there. Uh, but, but point well taken. I think we need to, in some cases, ask a few more questions to be a little more specific. Thank you for that comment. Anybody else? Before we adjourn, a- a- again, thank you, uh, to the block grant commission for all your efforts and, and your, your work and, and looking applicants in the eye and, and going through miles and miles of applications. It, it's, it's not, it's not easy job, but, but, uh, you guys do an absolute fantastic job. Thank you very much. And to Chair Hudgens, thank you for being here and, and we really appreciate it, all the applicants. And then again, to our grant, uh, staff with Yvette and David, I thank you all too, uh, for your efforts. And then my colleagues, I appreciate all your, your comments. I appreciate everything you do for the members of our community. Uh, it's your leadership that, that really shows on evenings like tonight. And I'm very proud to say that, um, we were able to spend almost one point five million dollars in our community and that's going to go a long, long way. So thank you all very, very much. With that, if there's no further comments, we will adjourn to our next regularly scheduled meeting, which will be, before I say, Councilman Rodriguez, you have something to add? Or you're just waving goodbye? And so is Councilman Robinson. Okay. With that, meeting adjourned until our regularly scheduled meeting, next meeting, which will be July one. Good night, everybody. Thank you.
Night.